Morning everyone and welcome to the council meeting for the 21st of February. Please join with me in a caracia. Pakata. Pakata. Kia menea kilei tukuta. Kia mata. Kia na tiata kura. Itia iu ka ihaulu tei mai. Thank you very much. Apologies, we have no apologies today, but we have councillor Harrison Hunt on Zoom. I have received no declarations of interest, so we'll move into public participation. And could I welcome Grant McKinnon to the table, please? Good to see you, mate. He's been a developer in the central city over the last thirty years and would like to convey his thanks to the council and staff for their work and support.
I might stand up if you don't mind, I don't need to speak, everyone can hear me. My name's Grant McKinnon, I've been a residential property developer in central Christchurch since ninety-one or soon after. I've done mostly apartments, also done a couple of apartment buildings out in Sumner and recently a project in New Brighton. I've come along this morning because I want to acknowledge and thank the council for their role and for the efforts and what I've done over the last thirty years. It's been no small task which you guys take on and the staff especially. I'm taking a break, the last few years have been a bit of a rollercoaster. And I may well come back, if I don't, my daughter Sky may well in my place. I've got some thoughts and observations I'd like to share as well as the thanks. When I first got started, it was still a bit of a hangover from the nineteen eighties boom. So it goes a wee way back, through the nineteen nineties and the two thousands, it was pretty tough in the central city. There were a couple of cycles which came and went, and as with each cycle that comes along and each boom, you get cowboys come out of the woodwork and give property development a go. They get donged on the head and end up disappearing and leaving a mess. Sometimes a bit tough to take for those of us who try and stay in it over the long term. And then two thousand and seven, of course, we had the global financial crisis, which was very tough on me personally, that's where the banks failed. Fortunately for them, they got saved, people like me got hung out to dry, it was a tough time. Managed to get through it, it took a while, just in time for the earthquakes to come along. So all my buildings except for one managed to stay up, which was great, and nobody in any of my buildings got hurt, which was even better. After the earthquakes, of course, we had the rebuild time, which was a very active time for council and for councillors and also the staff, of course, and a few of us developers who tried to get residential going in the central city during that time. That was also pretty tough. And then, of course, we went into the, what I've noted here is the crazy Covid times and the boom which came along just a couple of years ago as part of that. Those cycles never really help anyone, they actually just make it harder for people like myself. The best thing you can have for a developer is just a consistent market all the way through. When it goes up and down, it creates distortions and can be very difficult to operate in. I've always operated by a couple of basic principles. The first one is that as a developer, the living environment that we're creating is the very first thing that we have to get right. Some of my colleagues tend to develop on the basis of the numbers. They are equally as important, but they always come second. The very first thing that a developer should do is concentrate on making a very good living environment, because that's what we do. People come home, they rest their heads at night and sleep and they relax, they get up in the morning, you have to create a good living environment. If you put the numbers first, you end up making mistakes. You might end up with a bedroom without a window or some other feature which just turns people off. So the numbers must come second, they're equally as important, but they must come second. Another principle I've operated by is that great architecture has significant benefits to the people that live in the development, the people in the immediate locality and for the wider city as well. One thing I am proud of is that three of my projects won architecture awards. They were the Gallery Apartments, Rikai Apartments in Kilmour Street and recently the Riverbank Quarter over on the corner of Manchester and Cambridge Terrace. One of the other principles I've always worked by is that I'll only build what I'm happy to live in myself. At least then I get it right for one person. A few other comments, I've often heard over the years that central city living in Christchurch is something new and the population isn't used to it, that's not right. Central city living in Christchurch is the oldest living in Christchurch and that goes back to Maori as well. They lived at the top of the tide, which was over near Fitzgerald Ave. And when the English and other Europeans arrived, they also lived in the same area and they've stayed living here ever since. So it's actually the oldest established suburb, if you like, in the city. Before the earthquakes, there were about eight thousand people living in the central city. It was a very strong, well-established population, a small market for people like me to work in, but it was strong and established and it worked reasonably well. Post earthquake or during the earthquakes, of course, that population, which was a little bit older, got dispersed and unfortunately they haven't come back. But there is a new generation of inhabitants in the central city. You'll see that solidify over time, I'm sure, and it will build. I think the city in terms of residential population in the central city is in really good position at the moment. There is also a new generation of developers and business people active in the city as well. People that were active before the earthquakes have either stopped or perhaps they worked through the rebuild and have stopped now. So it's interesting, there's a whole new generation of developers that are active, you'll be aware of some of them, I'm sure. One thing I'd like to comment on is the developments contribution rebate scheme, which was put in place during the rebuild. That really helped, I came in here and presented on a couple of occasions on that. And there was at one point, it was at risk of being cancelled while there were still some funds available and I implored council to extend it just for a little bit further to keep the momentum going. During the first part of the rebuild, there were actually less than a handful of residential developers active in the central city. There was only a few of us and we were struggling to get the momentum going, but we did, together with council. So you guys need to be congratulated and I applaud you for doing that, that did really help and it got the momentum going. And now we're seeing what's happened in the East Frame and other developments around the city, so well done. Give me one second. One thing I've always, you might be interested in this, I've been to a lot of council workshops, forums, meetings, all sorts over the years. And I've often been asked one particular question every single time and I've always given the same answer. I get asked, what is the one thing council could do to help me as a developer in the central city? And I've always given the same answer and that's amenity, street amenity. When I've finished a building, if you guys could come along and reseal the footpath in front and plant a couple of trees, that would do it. If you can just plant trees on all the streets and improve the footpath so that when people come home, at the end of the day, they turn into their street and it's welcoming. Street amenity is the thing. So with those few comments, I would like to acknowledge the role that council has taken in residential development. You're a creation of central government, of course, and at times I feel sorry for you because you always get dumped with all sorts of things that you have to deal with from central government and you have to deal with it within what I consider an antiquated funding system called rates. So good luck to you, I don't know how you do it. I'd also like to acknowledge the work that you do in monitoring and supervising the building code. Now, of course, you get developers like me squeal and squawk all the time when we're trying to get our code compliance certificates or a section two two four certificate for a subdivision consents. But it's very important that the building code and basic standards are monitored and maintained so that the public has confidence. If the public and my buyers don't have confidence, then I can't operate. It's a crucial role, so thank you, I acknowledge the work that you do there. If that's not done, of course, you end up with things like leaky homes. I'd also like to acknowledge the professionalism of council staff. You know, I've dealt with a lot of them over the years, I don't know too many at the moment, or at least at the moment, but I've known a lot of them over the years, they've been very professional, always, most of the time, take the phone call and come back and answer the questions. It's probably best illustrated by an anecdote. When I first started, I was in my early twenties and you can tend to get a little more emotional at times if things are a bit frustrating. And at times I've squawked myself and I've perhaps bitten a little bit harder than I should have. That has never been responded to in kind, so if I've bitten, it's never come back to me and I'd like to really acknowledge that, that particular point. Very professional and most appreciated. So I'd like to give thanks to all the staff, too many to name. There are lots and lots of them in building and subdivision and planning and transport and water and drainage and been at the admin administration. And to the councillors, to your councillors out here, I've presented to you many times over the years and you always listen and I think take on board what I say, so I appreciate that. One last point, there's been one organisation that has been consistent in all my projects for the last thirty years and that's you, council. There's been banks come and go, builders come and go, architects come and go and engineers, but it's one organisation that's been with me on every single project and it's the council. And it's worked well, it's been fun, believe it or not. I enjoy what I do and have done, it's a real challenge and I actually don't mind it when council says, well, you can't do that. Don't mind a challenge, but you guys have been consistent all the way through, so I'd just say thank you and I sincerely appreciate your efforts.
I'd just like to say thank you to Grant, I could listen to you all day talking like that. It's a welcome change to some things that come in here, but taking the time to come in and say that and thanks so much for your passion and contribution to the city over the years and all the best for the future, thank you. Okay, we have no deputations or petitions today, so before moving into our staff reports, can I please get a mover and seconder to include the supplementary items twelve and thirteen? That's councillor Cotter and councillor Hensock, thank you. Which twelve is the draft submission, Canterbury Regional Land Transport Plan and number thirteen, the mayor's report. Right, so. Oh, and I voted, you're all those in favour? Against, thank you Kerry, thank you Katie. Couldn't do without, everyone needs a Katie. Right, so in my mayor's report. Bringing this report to you today, just to say thank you, and I'm happy to move it and councillor Scandrit is happy to second it, but acknowledge the people in the report that, when we were sitting over last Wednesday, wasn't it? And a bit of, you would have seen a bit of action happening and Josh running around like a headless chook going, ooh, ooh, something's happening. Ooh, something's happening, so after our meeting, I shot round to our emergency event centre, which I have been to before, which is absolutely fantastic and I would invite any council to go round and have a look, it's very good. So when we got round there, it was, oh, we'd better put a state of emergency in. Now, you have to go through a process to get to this point, we've got very special people round there who are well qualified and we sat down and I rang Mayor Sam from Selwyn and Mayor Neil from Ashburton because he's the head man of that area, because we were, if I'd done it myself, it would have been, I could have just done it myself, no problem, but because some of the fire was in Selwyn, we purposely got Sam involved as well, which meant that Neil had to be overall involved. Neil just left work and he said, give me two minutes, I'll turn around, I'll sign the piece of paper and it happened. Within fifteen minutes, we had the state of emergency. Now, the best thing about that is, it gives the people round at the operation centre the power to do what they do best. And as we know, they certainly have done the best and we wouldn't be in the situation we are now without them. The fire is now well contained and coming under control, although this may take some time before it is officially extinguished. Soon, and I happen to know this, at twelve thirty, we're going to move into recovery mode and John Fassell is the council's recovery manager going forward. This process will be done alongside our neighbours in Selwyn and it will take some time to plan and consider. I don't want to dwell too long on this today because John and the team have plenty of work still to do in the weeks in front of them to come. But a couple of things that have been raised for consideration that I want to note today. The impact of excess water charges affecting households who had to dampen their property and open up their swimming pools and the like, and also replanting affected areas and how we replant. These are things that John and his team will work through over the coming months and he will get back to us. So I'll just ask John to come up and give us a short overview of what the recovery process looks like. But I'd just like councillors, we have a lot of our CDM, civil defence emergency team in the room, so I'd just like some applause for them, please. So, yeah, John, thank you.
Thank you to the mayor for his acknowledgement and as a civil defence team in council, we agree. Planning for the recovery began shortly before the emergency was declared and the recovery team, led by a CDM Canterbury chap called Richard Ball, along with a number of others, including our lawn from Selwyn, were operative through the emergency, the decision on which will be made shortly whether to end. So we've been preparing for recovery on a number of fronts. Firstly, our planning initiatives, what we do in the immediate term, long, sorry, short, medium and long term. It's highly likely that major focuses on the recovery will be environmental, damaged vegetation, effect on water waste, sedimentation, biodiversity, both on public land and private land. That will be a key focus. Initially, at least there'll be a social focus. The reaching out without annoying those affected and making sure they are comfortable and back in their properties, those one property still evacuated and supporting them, they will be going to partnership with Tafata Order and our local community developed teams will have a major role. Another focus will be on built assets because they include lifelines, telephones, repeaters, the roads, tracks, all sorts of things like that, as well as public and private built property. So we'll have a focus there. The recovery will be run in a coordinated and cooperative manner. At this stage, led by civil defence Canterbury, supported by council and Selwyn. That might change as the recovery proceeds and we focus more probably on the environmental. Expect clear communications today, immediately after any declaration. The expect collaboration and cooperation with a whole range of interested and vital stakeholders. Probably one thing we'd like to acknowledge is Naitahu and their involvement right from the start and the interest that they are showing in the process, probably all I want to say at the moment.
Okay, so I've just got something to add to, sorry councillor Henson, I've just got something I want to add on to the end of what I said and what John said, that the real heroes of the operation here are the staff and volunteers who volunteered to do things. Now, getting up every morning and dragging a hose over a whole lot of burnt ground up on a
up on a hill is not what I'd call my idea of fun. But those guys get up and do it every day in the last week and they are the ones we need to thank as well. Right, well I've got a couple of questions, one from councillor Coca, please.
With the mayor's welfare fund and then the excess water charging, paying for those, I was just wondering if it would make more sense just to waive those excess water charges? And I was wondering what other, what the, any donations, what else they might go to for the people who've benefited?
Good question councillor Coca. At the moment, we are looking at the most effective and efficient way of doing that from the community who have affected, whether they need to go through a process of waiving charges, it might be easier and we're establishing it at the moment for the bill to be produced and the mayor's welfare fund to cover it really quickly and efficiently from our staff and a customer perspective. We will use the quickest and most effective way.
Thank you.
So you, we just want to clarify, John, that we don't, that is one of the options, we are looking at other options about waiving it because we don't want to have any incorrect messaging that any donations that have come into the mayor's welfare fund for recovery are being spent on paying council for excess water. So we are going to, we're trying to find the quickest and easiest way and it may be that we do it by another resolution or something else. So it's actually about the speed, but we want to make it really clear that donations to the mayor's welfare fund are being used for recovery, they are not to pay a water bill to Christchurch City Council.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's very clear, thank you Mary. Councillor Templeton?
Thanks so much, John. Just a question on the development of the recovery plan. And I know that after the last fires, the recovery plan was really comprehensive, had some really good stuff in it, including, for example, we put on an extra staff member to help in the Port Hills Recovery Planting, those kind of things, in the Park Ranger Team. Will this be done in time for our decision on the long-term plan in June? I know the, the last fire was larger and took longer, but the recovery plan was there kind of at the end of June.
Recovery plans being developed at the moment, the, I, I couldn't imagine, the only thing that may impact was plans evolve over time, but certainly the initial very comprehensive draft, looking at long-term solutions, will be ready soon. I can't give a date on it because they're working at the moment and it will involve all of the people and agencies who you'd expect to be in there to give a really good comprehensive, long-term look to it.
Yeah, I for one am quite happy to be.
We will keep, we'll keep my horo board posted because it intimately affects them.
Yeah, thanks.
Councillor Hanson?
Yeah, thank you. I was just wondering if we, just wondering what the budget is for the response and if we know, appreciate that it's only just happened, but is there a budget that we're using? And how do we track the quantum that we're spending? And what's the budget forecast for the recovery plan?
From the beginning of play, we opened, as we do, a what's called cost centre and we're tracking all our costs against that. A little too early to tell, but one of the immediate tasks is to, not just our response and recovery budget, but we'd like to ascertain the cost of the incident to, to other stakeholders and report that back as part of an immediate action plan in the recovery process. So it's underway and from a council perspective, we've established the means of capturing that from twenty minutes before day one.
Right, so do we, is there a cost share with central government because it was a state of emergency? Or is it just us?
We're, we're getting advice on that at the moment. In the, in the interim, the, we are capturing our costs and those processes are underway.
Right, and I'm just mindful that, that we've got a challenge with the resources at the moment to do things that we've already promised communities we will do. What's the, how are we balancing the resource required to do the recovery plan with the other things that we've already committed to doing?
We've only just started the recovery plan, it's not, it hasn't actually started until twelve thirty today and these guys will be well on top of it and they will come to us if they need any assistance.
Sorry, are we, I'm just trying to understand if we're putting additional resource so we can do the additional work or if there's other things that we're currently doing that are going to get delayed while we do this?
We'll come back with advice because we can't put additional resources aside because we don't know how many missiles, how much resource that is. So as soon as we have actually identified the plan and quantified things, we will report back and we will regularly report back. So at the moment, there is no funding identified because there is no cost identified as such for the going forward part. But as soon as we know that, we will report back.
And, and John will let us know that. Okay, so I've got a mover and second for that. I'll put that motion, all those in favour? Against, thank you, very much carried. Right, we'll now move on to staff reports, I think. Yep, item five, and I'd like Helen White to come and present to us, please. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm joined at the table by John Fassell, who is, thank you, Mayor, I'm joined at the table by John Fassell, who will talk to the report in relation to the community boards' briefings and workshops. And I will speak to the governing body side, briefings and workshops. So this report that's before you today was generated as a result of a council resolution from last November, which is within the context of an Ombudsman's report that came out in October, which talks about workshops to be held in public where it is reasonable to do so and unless there is a good reason not to. And the advice today in the staff report is that we follow the Ombudsman's guidance and decide to do that by default. I do just want to make it clear to everybody that this report from the Ombudsman does represent a step change in his advice and what is good practice. And it is different from the advice that he gave us and recorded in his report about this council in 2019. This report that came out in October was following an investigation that the Ombudsman initiated into eight councils. Christchurch City Council was not one of those councils. But as a result, the recommendations in that report, the Ombudsman has made clear, he expects them to be followed by all councils. One of the things that the, that the Ombudsman makes clear in his report is he does recognise the value of workshops. And he notes in particular when they are two-way engagement at the formative phases of decisions, that it enables staff to understand preferences that allow staff not to waste time and to focus on the options that are viable. He also recognises the value in workshops when there is an educational value or a matter is particularly complex or technical and there is, and there is a need to take some time to ensure that all members understand the matter that is before them. And the last area, he talks about the benefit for having workshops or briefings, is when a decision is multifaceted. So when a matter that is coming to you and not just one report, but in many reports. So that would include, for example, long-term plan decisions. So what this report gave to us was the opportunity to look at our current practices and identify if there was anything we were doing that doesn't fit within what the Ombudsman is now saying is best practice. And we have found that some of the things that we have been doing in the past doesn't quite fit with how the Ombudsman sees workshops should be conducted. So that does mean that the number of briefings that you have currently experienced will reduce. It also means that the information that is before you when you make a decision around this table is that we are looking at how we present that to you and that will include some changes to the report template so that all the information that you need to make a decision is before you when you are having a formal meeting like this one. So operationally, what does this mean in terms of changes? It means when we do have a workshop or a briefing and we are proposing to change the name to information sharing sessions, that there will be published agenda that everyone can see. They will know what is being talked about. Papers will be provided in advance and the public will be available to view those sessions where it's reasonable. There will still be good grounds sometimes to not have the door open and that may be that the matter you need to work through in a workshop setting is commercially sensitive. Or it may be there is personal information or other matters which are set out in legislation, which the Ombudsman considers are reasonable for you to consider, appropriate to close the doors. The other matter I did just want to address in relation to asking questions is that in the report, the Ombudsman records that some councils felt that having the door closed allowed councillors to have a safe space to ask the silly questions. And he uses that word silly questions. And his view about that is that elected members should not be afraid to ask those questions in public, that that is what you are elected to do. So, information sharing sessions, when information is being shared with you, would generally still be held in this room. That is what we are recommending. When there is a two-way engagement required, so when we're talking about a workshop, we are recommending they are not held in this room. The setup in this room for an easy two-way dialogue is, is not ideal. And the recommendation is that workshops are held either in the committee rooms or in the mayor's lounge, where our observation is we see better engagement between staff and members. That does mean that we can't physically accommodate staff attending, sorry, members of the public attending when it's not in this room because of the number of people who would be required to be in the room. Members of the public, though, are not participants in a workshop. The participants are the officers who are advising and yourselves. However, if there are members of the public who are not able to view a workshop virtually, but can only come into this building to view a meeting, a workshop, my apologies, we will make arrangements for them to view as it's happening somewhere else nearby, if there, if there is a need for that. In terms of how a briefing or a workshop comes about, there are four ways that the standing orders allow this to happen. It is either by a resolution or it is a decision of the mayor or it is a decision of a chair of a committee or a community board, or it is a chief executive decision. So those are the four routes by which the decision to hold a workshop are made. I was asked a question, which I would like to address today around the cost of whether to hold a workshop in this room or in a committee room. There is no difference in terms of cost-wise. There would be a cost impact if we were to make physical changes to rooms to facilitate members of the public attending for viewing purposes in a room that is not this one. The choice then is therefore whether the public physically present in this room for a workshop is more valuable than the short-term solution of having workshops in the mayor's lounge or the committee's room where the public can view it virtually. Just another matter that, a question that has been asked is about the length of meetings and whether the formal meetings will take longer because there will be fewer information sharing sessions. And the recommendation is if members have questions to ask, that they ask those in advance. That is already a requirement under the standing orders. The agendas are published on the Thursday before a Wednesday meeting. The standing orders ask that you provide your questions in advance where practicable. And what we will be aiming to do if questions are submitted through the office of the chief executive, that we will then prepare the answers and circulate those and make those available to everyone. If there are follow-ups because the question is not answered sufficiently, they can be addressed in the meeting themselves. I will now turn over to John Fassell, who will speak in relation to community boards.
Thank you Helen, largely what Helen said applies to community boards. The, we've discussed firstly the Ombudsman's report and our emerging response to it with community board chairs and deputy chairs. Last occasion was on the fifteenth of February. They are supportive of the recommendations. They, they requested some support and training. The ASMR workshops will be in public and there will be public attending. So there's some personal training for chairs and deputies, which we've agreed to do. They see community board workshops, from which we, sorry, community board rooms as the location to primary location to deliver workshops. Live streaming can be attained from all of those locations. The exception is when there's a big or highly localised issue. For example, civil defence in the eastern hills of Akarawa, that might be better held in the Gayati Hall. They were also supportive of the logistical and information-related informal meetings remaining, remaining private. So there was a, probably a welcome, they feel more comfortable operating in that environment and, yeah, it was largely, largely quite positive. That's probably, probably it for boards.
Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you Helen and John, I'm more than happy to move this and councillor Scandrick's more than happy to second it. So we will do questions, we've got councillor Hensock first, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got a couple of questions. In relation to asking questions, we're going to put it through the officer of the OCE. I'm just conscious that sometimes we get late papers, supplementary papers and there isn't going to be sufficient time. Is there going to be some allowance for us to be asking questions on the day instead of rushing around in a hurry?
Absolutely. In relation to the suggested timeframe, that's for items that are on the main agenda, if there are supplementaries, it's about what is practicable. And if it's a late report, it may not be practicable for either yourself or for staff to respond in advance.
Thanks for clarifying that. My second question is really in relation to the opportunity for community groups to present some of their ideas and proposals and you referenced this in the table that we've got. And I'm, I'm thinking that we need to be very careful about what we wish for because on some topics, we have a very engaged public and if given an opportunity, they will present at all and every opportunity that they've got. So if efficiency is one of our drivers here for this change, how does this actually work? And what is the process then for those members of the public that do want to actively engage in the process? And what rules and processes have we got to avoid that duplication? Duplication in terms of same person delivering same message and different people delivering the same message?
If I may, just in relation to addressing the, the governing body of the council formally that is still within standing orders for formal meetings and within submission processes, there aren't any other formal arrangements for groups to address the whole council. It may be something in terms of community groups that may be more appropriate for John to address.
Yep, board chairs asked a similar question and the, the response was firstly Helen's, you know, standing orders and the opportunity to make a delegation or a, or other engagement is still provided for in the workshop itself. To a large extent, it will depend on the nature of the workshop and the nature of the issue and a discussion with the chair and the deputy chair on how the chair and the governance would like that particular workshop to go. So we'll customise an approach.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I do have another couple of things. I think this is an important step change that you spoke about, so I just want to clarify another matter. And it was about the impact of the change and expected that most matters will go straight to committee or council. You commented on who decides if a workshop, if we're going to have a workshop. I can't recall if you said that there was provision for the councillors to request it. Was that in the list?
No, under the appendix seven in the standing orders for a workshop or a briefing or any informal meeting, the four routes for that to be held are the chief executive, the mayor, the chair, or by resolution. or by resolution. So what that would mean in terms of if a councillor had a request, they could make a request of either the mayor, the chair or the chief executive or put forward an amendment if it was appropriate or a notice of motion.
Or the board chair.
Or the board chair. Sorry, thank you, John.
Thank you, Ellen.
Or the board chair.
Thank you. Councillor Cocker.
Should have submitted this nine o'clock yesterday. I said, this is bad. I've got a few little questions. If you, if people are submitting questions before, which I think is actually really good, but sometime, and you said you could have follow-up questions if the information wasn't sufficient. But I have to say, I often think of things on the spot. I just want to be assured that we're not going to be limiting questions when we're not having previous briefing times to give us a little think about things.
That's not the intention of the report. I mean, it would be a matter for the meeting and for the chair in terms of normal meeting process and procedure. But there's still provision in the standing orders for questions to be asked.
Yeah. I was wondering for workshops, because you talked about committee rooms and I forgot the other place you talked about. But we do have a function room where there's more space where you could actually have sort of workshops in for the public in. Has that sort of option been considered?
Yes, and we have considered it. It's not technically set up for to be able to have virtual presence, but it has been looked at as an option in terms of a low-cost, fast option to support the ombudsman's recommendations. It's not something we can deliver right now.
Okay. And then there's live streaming versus recording because there's sort of different things noted. Live streaming is preferred. Sometimes it could be recording and other ones say just recording, say for a seminar. Could you talk through like what is going to be preferred, I guess?
So for an information sharing session or a workshop, they will be recorded at the time and they can be watched live at the time and will provide links for any interested members of the public to do that. They will be on the same sort of quality as the Zoom briefings for, such as the community boards have. So it'll be static. And then they will be posted available for anyone to watch at any time.
I'm guessing, I'm just wanting to know, is live streaming going to be the the preference rather than recording and then posting later?
It's just a slight difference, I guess, in terminology. When we have formal meetings like we're having today, where we have audiovisual technicians physically on site doing a live stream with camera shots and then that is available for the world to watch on YouTube. Now they can pause it, they can go back to it. What we'd be looking at for the workshops and the briefings is viewing the Zoom call effectively. So the low, it's a lower tech and cheaper option that we as staff can administer without needing to bring in audiovisual technicians, which has the very real cost attached to it.
And my last question was, is there any additional support for community boards for doing more of this? I know they sometimes struggle with the technology as well as running things at the same time.
Yeah, that was a question raised by the board chairs and the answer given was we will we will proceed into this and I think the report says that we'll review this. Is it six months?
We'll we'll review it on an ongoing basis and if there's a need for us to invest additional resource, both at community boards or for council, we'll look at that.
We've identified a staff member who's able to work through board to board to be able to support in the interim. So yeah, we're supporting training and we'll review. It was raised by two board chairs.
Okay, sorry, councillor Keown, please.
You just around the comments on workshops being held in the committee rooms because I've been to those before and also upstairs. Where did the feedback come from that it doesn't work that well in here?
That's what I've been told by others. But if you're.
I mean, I for one quite like this room and find it works pretty well. But certainly a lot better than a committee room with everyone jammed in. You can't whisper in there because it echoes off the wall behind you.
I mean, this is, that's.
We could make a judgment call around the events at the time. We're not necessarily locked in to having them in any venue. So advertising.
Because this this corner here has lots of little and jokes and stuff.
Moving right along, councillor, councillor Barber.
I'm intrigued by this. In terms of, once these, once we follow these recommendations, who is the arbiter of whether we're actually achieving what the ombudsman is recommending? Who decides that?
If we're achieving it, ultimately, I guess it would be the ombudsman. But, you know, our target is to ensure that we fit with his guidance, which he expects all councils to follow, which is in keeping with the legislative principles of being open and transparent in our in decision-making, which is a principle within the Local Government Act. So in terms of who is going to judge, potentially the ombudsman on inquiry and ultimately the members of the public who are viewing what the decision-making that is happening.
So I can see we've had eight ombudsmen in the history of the office. What's to say a new ombudsman comes along in a few years, will that change, you know? I mean, you know, how does that work? Sorry?
I can't answer that. Historically, ombudsmen have tended to follow what previous ombudsmen have done, but that's no, there's no role or around that. This ombudsman, who has a few years to go on his term, has made these recommendations and he says it's best practice.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Just a quick question from me. Helen, this this aligns us with a lot of the rest of the country. We were out of step, so to speak, to a certain point.
Yes, and a large number of other councils already follow similar principles. And there there are not that many that I could locate that have briefings in the way that we used to have them.
Uh huh, okay. Councillor Johansson, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. So several questions. One is, similar to councillor Keown, I'm concerned about the suggestion of using the committee rooms. They don't work well for technology, like charging your device is quite difficult, especially if there's multiple people that need to do it. You've got cords running all over the place. I'm concerned about things like the impact of not being able to have a little bit of distance between people with Covid or illness going around. And also to the point that we often, we've had capacity issues in those committee rooms where we can't fit people uncomfortably to be able to, you know, do what they need to do. So do we need to make that decision now or is that something that could just, like the chair or or the mayor or the chief executive, the secretary, it could just determine from time to time based on what the nature of the thing is? Yeah. And do we also need to make the decision today about limiting people being able to attend in person?
There are not, if if a workshop or an information sharing session was held in this room, there are no limits because we can physically accommodate members of the public in this room.
So we don't need to make that call as part of the recommendations?
No, no. And there isn't a decision before you to, the decision about is agreeing that informal meetings will be held by default in public where it's reasonable to do so.
Cool, thanks.
I think we're getting to the point where we're we're overthinking it. This is something that's been brought to our attention and I'd like to thank councillor Johansson and the project team for doing it. But it's, we're going to try it, as you can see, on there for six months. So with last question, you got another one?
Yeah, yeah, I've got several ones. So in the page eight of the report, it says that there may be occasions where workshop is considered sensitive as its publication would have it the future exchange of free and frank opinions. And then it goes on to say the free and frank withholding ground is not applicable to formal lego meetings, but could be considered for some workshops on a case-by-case basis. And I was just trying to get an understanding of, are we going to change how we apply that free and frank? The latest example I've been given for free and frank and things needing to be in public excluded has been a design of a cycleway shed pathway along Marine Parade. And I'm just trying to understand if that.
Councillor Johansson, we're getting into the weeds too much.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to understand, like in future, would would a workshop on, say, a shared path still be considered free and frank and therefore public excluded? Or would this change the way in which we do those things where we would, we wouldn't use that as a reason?
You're getting down into the weeds too much. Right, next question. I'll ask councillor Moore, please.
Sorry, I just had had one more. Well, I did submit this one and I haven't had an answer, which was in the report, it says that generally the community boards have their workshops in public, but that's not been my experience. So can we just get some understanding if that is true or not?
Right, we'll do that. Okay, thank you.
No, you can, John can answer that one quickly and clarify that.
Yeah, yes, I can. The where a community board holds a workshop, they invite people, there is two or three-way engagement, they are in public. Look, an example of that would be the Whyhoro Library Options Workshop. On Thursday, the briefings, the where's information transferred, yet they have been in PX. So I think there's some word interplay between workshop and briefing. Six percent of community board briefings over the past year have been in the, have been open, the rest have been PX.
And that's changing with this.
Yep, thank you. I've I've heard enough. Councillor Moore's the last one and then we'll put it to.
Thank you.
All right.
Obviously, it's a very big change. There may be some teething challenges along the way. I'm just wondering, the reason for landing on six months was maybe quite far out? And there may be a lot of challenges between now and, say, three months? I'm just, is it too far away to review?
There's no magic in the number six months. It was just to make sure that we'd really had an opportunity to get over what may be some initial changes and to make sure everyone understands the the changes that we've recommended. But if there's anything major that we need to look at before six months, we will.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very good. Right, we're now into debate. Who would like to start off? Councillor Johansson.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you to staff for the work that they've done on this. I'm really pleased to see that today we're going to be voting on an option to be much more transparent with our community. I appreciate that there's probably no such thing as a perfect solution, but I think most of what's been proposed hopefully will lead to greater transparency and greater understanding from the community and the public of how we're doing things. My notice of motion came out of the deep frustration that things like right-hand turning arrows on ferry road or safe pedestrian crossings in Phillips Town or shared pathways and cycleway route selections were being done in public excluded briefings and the community was unable to come along and attend and hear the information that was presented to elected members. As recently as last week, I was being given the advice that that needs to happen because it needs to be free and frank. And I totally reject the notion that the community should not be able to understand the thought process behind us designing cycleways, shared pathways, safe pedestrian crossings, et cetera, or even getting advice from NZTA on why or why not a right-hand turn arrow cannot be put into ferry road. So I think this is a real positive. It's been something that I've been pushing for at least nine years around this council and I appreciate the ombudsman's report. I think there's no valid reason why we should keep our briefings as a default setting to be closed. So I totally endorse trying a new way of doing things. I also think when we look at the resident satisfaction surveys and how people comprehend what we do, there's significant decline in the resident satisfaction and comprehension of that. And I think this hopefully can help contribute to trying to reverse that trend. I also think the other important thing is to recognise that we don't have committees as a council by and large now. And under the the old system, many years ago, we would have a committee that would make recommendations to the full council, which would enable a lot of that work and that consideration and those questions to be answered and dealt with and give the public much more than just a few days' notice of something going direct to council as we currently do now. I think the other trade-off, or not trade-off, the other benefit, I think, to this approach is hoping, from what I've read in the report, that draft consultation documents will actually come to the elected members into an open meeting for sign-off rather than go to a public excluded briefing for feedback, then go out for consultation. So hopefully the public and the council as elected body can make a decision around what goes out for consultation to our community. So there's transparency around those plans as well, rather than what happens at the moment, which sometimes it can be quite hard for the community to understand where things have come from. So thank you to the staff. I look forward to trialling this and seeing what we can do to improve transparency.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Johansson.
I'm fully supportive of the staff's recommendation and thank you councillor Johansson for bringing the notice of motion in the first instance. I agree that this is what transparency looks like and I think that in recent years we have been far from transparent and I recognise the things that you've said. So this is the right thing to do and I applaud the mayor for supporting this as well. For me, it's not just the transparency that sways me, it's also the efficiency for our staff. So I'm hoping that this is going to remove some of the unnecessary duplication and sincerely hope that this then transpires into staff having more time to actually do the mahi and spending less time on some of their PowerPoint presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Scandrick.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to, first of all, so the lack of transparency in the past, we are the governors. We have the choice of that. We have the decision. So just want to clarify with the public that there is no conspiracies here. It is our decisions at any time to open or close things. So just wanted to clarify that. So just from now, it's, I really like this. I think this is going to be a real change to our process. I think one of the key things will be freeing up staff time to do other things to be more efficient for the rape powers of Christchurch. I do think that it's going to be very interesting who turns up on time. Because let's be honest, at many of our briefings, it seems that a lot of us don't really know what nine o'clock and nine thirty means. So it's going to be very interesting and I look forward to it. I also look forward to people being able to look at the recordings and taking their time to look over what's being discussed and really understand it. And then hopefully contact their local councillors to raise their concerns with us with meetings coming forward with decisions. So I'm really looking forward to this. It's going to be good to get in line with the rest of the country and see how we get with feedback from the ombudsman's office as well. Cheers.
Okay, councillor Cotter.
Just quickly, I think this will be a good process, actually. Our meetings may be a little bit longer, but that's up to us and that's okay, that's fine. The only thing I wee bit worried about is the the shorter time that the public may be aware of what's coming on the agenda. And I'm thinking that if we could maybe look at perhaps putting out a forward work programme or likelihood of what's coming up in the agendas in the next, say, two or three months, it might be a feasible thing to do so that people are alert to that. But that could be a work in progress, but I will support this today. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've got it. We've had councillor Templeton.
Thanks so much. You know, I wholeheartedly support the move to having open information sharing sessions slash briefings and workshops and I'm really glad that we're getting to that point now. One of the things I am concerned about, though, was the discussion we had yesterday around the the cost of maintaining a current structure where we have briefings on a Tuesday and then formal meeting, you know, with the papers, you know, a week or so ahead. So people can be clarifying information, making sure we've got the right stuff in place. And the discussion centered around the fact that while we would need to open those up to the public, it would be cheaper not to. And so briefings are being cut because they are costly and that that means that we will have longer council meetings. I'm fine with that. I'm happy with reading lots of material. But many people aren't and many people struggle to read the many hundreds of pages that are on our agendas. And I'm concerned that only limiting the way that people access council information is to those who are happy reading long bits of paper. That's for elected members as well as members of the public. We know that many people who get elected are neurodiverse, they have different reading abilities, disabilities, all of those kind of things. And the briefings give people an opportunity and would. um and would have um if they were made public for people to access that information in a different, more accessible format than reading hundreds of pages as of agenda. Um, having said that, we will see how this goes. Um, people will have to be tolerant of a large number of questions um during council meetings and not um have exclamations and, and things and fru- of frustration when there are additional questions. Um, that's just the way that goes. Um, and uh, you know, um, those kind of comments will just have to stop because that's the acknowledgement that you get a day off on Tuesday now.
Day off, talk about day off.
Um, I think that was going so well. I thi- I think that, um, look, the, the.
Wasn't my comment, it was someone else's comment yesterday.
I heard it from you, so I'm not sure who else would have seen it. The, um, I mean, and if actually the irony is if we'd had yesterday's discussion in public, they would have heard it then too. So, look, I think this is, um, I just want to acknowledge Yanni, Phil and Pauline for leading this piece of work along with the team who have pulled it together. Uh, I think it's actually fantastic that we can be a lot more open uh and actually we uh can work in a way where everyone can see what we're doing. I think the biggest challenge for this uh will be the um quality, and I mean this in the nicest possible way to the organisation, the quality of the reports that come to us. And so there needs to be, the, the quid pro quo is that actually if the time that was going to be having the briefings, which the Ombudsman has said are not appropriate to do, let's be very clear about that. The Ombudsman has said we should be not having private briefings. Uh, the reality is that the time that would have been spent in those uh needs to be spent on making sure the port, the reports are easy for councillors to understand, but also for the public to understand. Um, I take Sarah's point that not everyone has, um, you know, we, everyone has a different ability in terms of how they interpret information. Um, but actually the underlying principle should be that any report we receive that is public should be easily digestible to every person on the street. And so actually if we take that principle to it, there should be no issue, there should be no duplication. And so I guess that really is the challenge uh to the council staff is that, um, you know, we're giving you the, the rope to go away and do it, um, but if we can improve that quality so that everyone can understand them, then actually we won't need, um, uh, you know, th- those briefings will become redundant and in fact be inefficient and duplication. Um, the only point, the only other point I make, I think, and it was Helen that said, the Ombudsman said, there's no such thing as a silly question. But I think he also said we shouldn't encourage silly questions.
Thank you, ca- thank you very much. Councillor Peters, please.
Thank you. Um, certainly supportive of this uh move and thank you to Yanni and, and Pauline for, you know, pushing this up forward. The notion that we're looking at perhaps having less briefings um concerns me a wee bit because as a new councillor, I've actually found briefings to be incredibly beneficial, a great way to get a lot of information to us as new members um efficiently and quickly. Uh, so I'm a little surprised that, that the notion that we're looking at having less briefings because of it. Um, I would have thought just a case of turning the camera on and there we are, we're now transparent. But um, hey, we'll just see, see how this goes and, and hopefully um those of us who are um less of the reading kind uh will not be too, too disadvantaged and can still keep up and, and keep ahead of what needs to be happening. So it's certainly supportive.
Thank you. Councillor McClellan, please.
Thank you. Um, I think this is a great day for local democracy and a watershed moment for CCC. Um, you know, we can hand on heart truly say that everything we do now is po- is open and transparent and in public. Really, this is about making sure that when a briefing is needed, it's in public. And when we don't need a briefing, um, we simply discuss the matter in a meeting. Uh, because actually to even have briefings does give rise, rise to a bad public perception. And some will say, look, briefings are just an opportunity to understand matters. But of course, you are welcome to read your papers, you are welcome to ask questions and you are welcome to ask those questions both beforehand and during a meeting. Um, and who would, who can hand on heart honestly say that during a briefing they've never been asked for a steer they weren't comfortable with, you know? Hmm, it's, uh, we do cross that line uh sometimes between um decision making and information exchange and, and a briefing. And I think that's natural and that's what happens when you, when you allow a forum like that. So I think this is great. This is a change for the better and I look forward to seeing how, how it goes.
Councillor Fields?
Um, I'll just, I, I agree with everything that's been said. Um, I just want to say I for one will not um lament the uh, the loss of the death by PowerPoint um method of, of information exchange. And for all the budding PowerPoint present, presenters out there, I think um if you're gonna um put a PowerPoint up and then just read off it, just send us the PowerPoint because we don't, we don't need to hear it. So. So, yeah, um, but consistency of information, I think we're going to get out of this, which I think is a real, which is a real win. I mean, you know, jokes aside, um, I think it's really good to have, have a level of consistency. And I think that um to Sarah's point, like lots of people have different ways of, of um of absorbing information and I think that this will just, um, just enhance that really, yep.
Okay, no more debates. So I will go ahead, we've got a mover and second to, yep. So I will go ahead and uh put that motion, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Thank you, that's carried. Now, before, before I move on to the next thing, this is just for information only. I've just read or been sent that um Green MP Afeso Collins has died after a child, he's doing a charity run event in Auckland. So this is very sad news indeed. But I just thought I'd share that with everyone out here. I think it was very sad. Forty-nine.
Ooh.
Okay, so now we'll move on to item number six. Committee Ebert. Yep. Okay, so Megan, please. Forty-nine.
Good morning. Um, I'm going to take the paper as read, but just as a really brief introduction. Um, during the requested portfolio review uh late last year, uh there was identified um for, and, and some of the respondents, um, the request for a more extensive or a review of the committee structure. And so that was requested at a council meeting late last year and this paper um addresses uh that review. Um, but I'm open to any questions.
Is it?
Sorry?
Is that it?
Well, I, I could go into it if you want.
No, that's, no, that's fine. Have we got, uh, councillor Templeton?
And, and also I've got um Matt Bolt here to ask, answer any questions of the um, the statistical nature.
Now, we've got some questions. Councillor Templeton, please.
Um, so thank you. So, yeah, there was um one asked yesterday. So the report talks about the fact that um some of the committees um in the previous term um sometimes had as low as fifty percent decision making papers, the rest were information papers. Um, maybe sixty-two percent for, for um urban development, for example. Um, so those information papers were sort of governance oversight papers as opposed to project related, is that right?
Some of them, probably, but not necessarily all of them. But Matt, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so um, uh, just a, a quick um summary. Um, in terms of the, the, the reduction in numbers, part of that is down to um some workaround consolidation of reports. Uh, an example being um that included the community board reports to council, which used to be individual per, per board, which has been consolidated down into one. Um, some of the frequency of the reports under the old structure, the reporting was, was more frequent. So what we've seen is um reporting uh that used to be monthly or bimonthly becoming quarterly or six monthly. Uh, so that's also contributed to the reduction in, in the numbers.
And so how many, um, uh, what's the proportion of sort of decision making reports versus information reports to council this time, this term?
Uh, this term?
Yeah.
Just a moment. So for the last term, the um proportion uh was twenty-five percent information reports. Uh, this term it's thirteen percent and decision making is around the same, around, um, sorry, around fifty percent for both.
Okay. Um, and the, the papers that we've been talking about getting those regular um six monthly information updates um from operational service delivery units, when can we start expecting those and do we know the broad range of those? So they've been asked for since the beg- I mean, we've had a couple sort of waters, for example, but since the beginning of last year. Um, and I'm just one, we haven't had oversight of, for example, libraries or parks or any of those kind of ones yet this term.
So what, we are working at the moment on doing up a, a consistent template for use and also um doing a kind of a roster for those coming through, but I gather it shouldn't be difficult to start come, getting them through, but um, I hadn't been aware of the request at the beginning of the term and I, I don't know where that sat, sorry, so apologies for that. But so this recommendation, this report helps address some of those to start getting them, to start coming through.
Yeah. And will those reports cover both the work that has been happened but also the forward work programme?
Uh, well, under this proposal, the interim chief executive at the moment will be doing um a forward work programme at the council level and so, but also those, the update reports. I would, I think realistically expect might have a part of a forward look as well. But that is something that we are working through at the moment with a template.
Yeah, so there's a difference between um getting a forward work programme for all of councils, so all of the reports and things that are coming up, which would be really useful. But also, for example, I have, i- in previous terms, we've had workshops or reports that have looked at upcoming work that the Three Waters Unit would be doing to repair pipes or that Transport would be doing on the road renewals, those kind of things. And I don't recall seeing that kind of work this term.
No, I don't know. Okay, no, I'm not sure uh, uh, the detail of that, but I threw the chief executive. Oh, well, I'm just wondering.
Threw me or do you want me to?
Well, well, I'm, I'm about to say something that I don't know if you're going to raise your eyebrows.
Go ahead. I'll try something at you.
Um, but I, I couldn't see why there, there couldn't be some form of forward work view in those updates.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, I just, um, I, yeah, I'll leave it for debate.
Thank you. Um, so I have been told that councillor McDonald is happy to move it and councillor Cotter's happy to second it. Uh, question from councillor Henstock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm noting your report at three point three, you're referencing that there was strong support for a review of, of the structure, came from a small subset of those who gave feedback. Um, I'd like to know really just who, how many people gave feedback here? Are they councillors? Are they other elected members? Are they staff? What are we talking about? I'm going to have to look to Boyd to answer that, sorry.
Councillor Henstock, um, the report around the portfolio review looked at existing portfolio holders and it looked at staff that work with those portfolio holders directly.
Okay, doesn't really give us much indication. Are we talking about in, in the, uh, five people, ten people? Three?
Look, I don't, there are, current, at the time, there were uh four people that held five portfolios. Uh, each of those had at least one staff member that was working with them, uh, plus some ancillary staff. So I could estimate councillor uh somewhere between twelve to twenty, but I cannot give you an exact figure without the information in front of me.
That's okay, small subset, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McDonald?
Hey, thank you, Megan and, and Matt, for this is a bloody good report. I think it articulates it really well. Um, it was probably along Sarah's theme, which um I think would be quite useful for everyone as that forward work programme. Um, I'm just thinking about other boards and things like that. Normally you do have it laid out for the year so that actually everyone knows that what month the updates from the different departments are scheduled on that. And if we could just have that attached to each agenda?
We are, um, we haven't solidified that kind of, that roster, so that's something that we are working on at the moment.
Yeah, so I guess it's just expressive, we can do, I mean, I know there's been heaps happening, but if, if, I think that would give the public a lot more visibility over when those touch points are for them to come in. And now we're not obviously doing the briefings in private, actually watching them in a council meeting will be really helpful. So could we make that a bit of a priority to get that work programme? And a- again, like I say, if we have it attached, maybe even in the agendas, um, after the strategic priorities so that everyone can see it, um, that would be really useful. Yep, thanks. Cheers.
Any more questions? We're going to.
No, I was just saying that I'd sent uh through uh an amendment that you might want to incorporate that just actually asks for, it says, um, agree to re- receive regular six month information update writs report from operational service delivery units including um for the forward work programme for the units.
Including what's?
Including the forward work programmes for the units.
Okay, councillor Don.
People are happy including that in the wording, Sam and.
Well, uh, yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Donovan, please?
Just a point of clarification. With the portfolio holders, when are the reports coming to council for those? Is that every six months? Because I think there have been some portfolios that we haven't had an update from.
As, as part of this work that we're working on, councillor Donovan, we are looking at putting together a schedule for those uh to allow uh or remind portfolio holders uh to submit a report to council uh as per the terms of reference that were adopted by council in November last year.
And can you just remind me when we set up some of the original portfolios? Because it's been.
Uh, I understand they were established at the end of twenty twenty-two. I cannot remember the exact meeting date.
Okay. Right, well, shall we fire into debate, please? Who would like to go first? Councillor Henstock?
Well, thanks for that. Uh, I've got two primary concerns with the reintroduction of the committees and the first is about duplication and inefficiency. And we've only just been talking about uh efficiencies and duplications in the previous agenda item. So I, I think that inherent in the return to the committee structure is, is increased uh resourcing and cost and duplication and it's going to have an adverse effect on the current staff workloads really. I note um the alarming stats in power of five point eleven point one and five point eleven point two of the staff report. So uh returning to the committee structure just really doesn't make much sense in that regard alone. The other issue for me is about um the risk of blurring the lines between operations and governance. I think it's reasonably apparent that we have councillors that, some councillors that like to dive right down into some of the operational issues. And I think that the committee structure actually provides an avenue for this to occur, uh, perhaps more readily. And I'm, I'm not convinced that that's good governance practice. Uh, I, uh, I see that there's other avenues for increased governance with the regular reports. Thanks for raising that, Sarah and Sam. Um, and, you know, the forward work programmes and I would encourage this uh together with the regular updates from the service delivery units. I, I'm likely to support this, but um I, uh, I, I'm a first term councillor, so I only know the system that we're currently operating under. So in the debate today, I'd really like to hear from some of our councillors from the previous term uh who have experienced the old system because I think that would be valuable information for those of us who haven't heard it. Um, my parting comment is that if we are wanting to attract high caliber uh people to uh run for election to council, we've already spoken about death by PowerPoint today and I think that death by committee is really not the way to go about that either. Thanks.
Any, councillor Templeton?
Thanks. Um, so this is uh my third term on council and this is the third different structure that I've had. Um, they varied, the, my first term, we had smaller committees with limited delegations then reporting through to council and there was duplication. Which is why the following term committees of the whole were set up. Um, and they just basically replaced council meetings, but it meant that someone different was in charge of um doing the agenda setting uh and making sure that the forward work programme and all of those kind of things have been dealt with um by those committees. In this term, we have no standing committees for the, for the major um sections, transport, community, those kind of things. Um, I don't know of another council around the country that doesn't have standing committees on these issues. Um, when Wellington tried it last term, they had a governance review partway through which um talked about real concerns about the, the portfolio system, the lack of committees, the um the way that some things didn't have proper oversight and there, and, and some had too much detail. Um, I don't think there's a perfect way to do it, but I am really concerned currently at the lack of governance oversight we have over some of our core council functions. Um, I am concerned that I don't know how much of our water network needs replacing in the next ten years for us to reduce our leakage rate and at five or two year intervals. I'm concerned that I don't know um how much of our road renewal programme we could or couldn't ramp up for various reasons, how much we're covering every year. Um, all of those things should be core governance that we should be delving into as a council, not at that. feel like all we're getting is the reports based off the budgets we set, here's a programme, um, here's a project, here's what we're doing about it, sign it off or not, or whatever, whether sign it off or not, but we're not getting that um, that real oversight and and depth and um insight into the organisation that I think that we need as governors, and that concerns me, um, and so I'll be voting against number one there, um, really want those reports, I've been asking them for a long time, um, and um we'll see how that goes.
Okay, councillor McLellan, please.
Um, I'm going to support the um moved um uh resolution, because while I think that in an ideal world, a committee structure probably is the best structure, I don't think we've done a committee structure well in the past, I think um that uh the the proposal in terms of how committees would work looks good, um, I think that the key, the the committee structures can can lead to a problem of um relitigating issues that I think um can be unhelpful, but the key to mitigating that is to make sure those committees are well-formed and representative of council, and that's how you mitigate the relitigation issue, so while I like the alternative structure proposed in this report, I think that given we're a year in and given that we're going to receive six monthly um uh reports from all the operational units, um, I think that actually the system um is pretty good considering um we wouldn't have to depart and and radically change, but in the future, particularly in the next term, I would like to see a committee structure reinstated and um and a committee structure done well, because I don't think we've done it, and I think it can work really good, um, when it's when it's done well.
Okay, so councillor Keown.
Yeah, uh, I've seen a couple of terms as well, um, and uh at council, so Vic, um, have have seen both, um, and uh the old saying boiling the cabbage twice comes to mind with um with committees, because what would happen is you'd get all this great information at a committee level and all these fantastic questions would be asked, and then you'd go to council level and get a repeat of the exact same thing, because usually the important questions are the same questions and you've got a different set of uh councils, so you've got the staff answering all the same questions twice, uh and you're going through the same PowerPoint presentation, which uh can be good for people of different abilities, um some people absorb PowerPoint and audible words better than reading, um, Tyron, but in an inclusive society, we we have both, uh, so, and Sarah made a point around that before, and that is important, um, and she comes from a teaching background, so she could probably explain to everyone how different people learn different ways, and we're all different, so, but the committee thing, um, I like the structure we've currently got, I think it is working well, uh, the six monthly reports, um, I've heard Sarah repeat a couple of times around the water pipes, I can't wait for the the state of our water, um, to hear that six monthly going forward, I think is really good, and the same with the state of our roads, hearing that six monthly, so we can keep an eye on our ball, on the ball, because the biggest complaints this council gets every year is around the state of our roads, so the six monthly giving us the state of the roads and the state of the water pipes will be really good, couple of others, state of the rubbish would be nice, um, and state of our waterways would be the key ones for me, our core business essentially, and getting those, and given that all the information's now going to be in public, even better, so a double whammy, thank you to you, Yanni, for that as well, um, so I look forward to us going forward on this without boiling the cabbage twice.
Ca- councillor Harrison Hunt, please, and then councillor Goff. Oh, now you're you're all happy, councillor Goff, please.
Feel I should probably speak to this, um, I've been around for a while and um it was asked, um, you know, for people's perspectives on this, so all all I can give you is just my genuine observations um on on the structures, but this is my fifth term, so I've seen um lots of different councillors, lots of different mayors, lots of different structures, um, prior to this term, I've seen committees, prior to this term, I've seen no committees, I've seen committees on the whole, uh and all variations in between, um, the whole nine yards, but i- in my in my honest opinion, um, take it with a grain of salt if you want, but I genuinely believe the structure that we've got has struck the balance best, um, there's no other reason for me to say that other than it's just how I felt uh that it's worked, I haven't felt that um there's been any lack of public participation, I don't believe that decisions have been rushed, uh, the um previous paper on uh raising the level of transparency around briefings and workshops, you know, I think that's a really good initiative, I didn't speak to it, but I'm supportive of it, and I think that can be incorporated into the structure that we presently have, I think there is a space uh for uh to get into the weeds, which is really what committees do do, uh and and that's for audit and risk and health and safety, um, but ultimately, I think our role is two-pronged, it's a representation role and it's a governance role, so when you're in your community, we want you to represent and represent well, and when you're in here, we want you to govern and to govern well, and uh by design, committees really do blur that uh that line between governance and management, um, and when, this is not meant in a disrespectful way towards elected members, but quite often when people don't have a corporate governance background, and there's nothing wrong with that, um, but that line is really easy to blur and it's frustrating for staff and it doesn't lead to great outcomes, and one anecdote where I think it was, uh, we got to the right outcome, but just the process was, you know, pretty appalling in hindsight, and that was the rebuild of the Bishopdale Library and Community Centre, where we went through public workshops, uh deep engagement at a community level through our community board, uh, the community board made a recommendation, that then went to a council committee, so the community and the locals, uh, who knew this area well, knew the community well, made a recommendation, it then went to a council committee, I think I was the only member of the community board that was actually on that committee, so, uh, and then there wasn't an ability for the community to come in there, so then a recommendation was made on a recommendation that we went to council to make a decision, so a decision made on two recommendations, um, Aaron speaks of boiling the cabbage twice, and uh, yeah, it 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 doesn't taste good, so um I think we've we've got um a a a pretty good structure now, and in my view, it's it's the best that we've got, there's always room for improvement, um, but it's working, and uh and that's my belief, so happy to support the recommendations.
Okay.
Take on board uh an an old man's uh views on on all of us, so I think it works.
I'm I'm surprised you had any cabbage left, um, councillor Johansson.
Oh, thank you, um, yeah, I I I've been running for a little a little while as well, and I've seen, I've seen, um, and when I was on community board, I've seen, uh, you know, attempt to have sort of portfolios as well, but I I think for me, like, um, you know, I I still fundamentally believe in the value of committees, that hasn't changed over my course of observation, uh, for the several terms that I've been on council, I like committees, because I think having a chair and a deputy chair that can look at the work programmes, can look at the information, and can take leadership around those things is really critical, and also I like the idea that it also shares the work programme around a number of council councillors, um, so the the other thing that's, I think, important to observe about committees is it also gives, and for all the examples that people might give about boiling the cabbage twice, there have been some really beneficial uh ways in which committees have dealt with quite difficult issues, and the town hall probably comes to my mind as a building that may not have been saved if it wasn't for having a committee doing the work beforehand, before it came to the full council, so for for every example you can give of maybe things that you feel are a bit frustrating that they've been relitigated twice, there's also a number of examples of things that have actually been hugely important to our city, that may not have happened if it wasn't for having a committee structure, that could enable a lot of work and thinking and 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 recommendations to go, that the public can see, so that's the other really important thing about committees, is it does give the community and the public more than just a couple of days to know that something's on the council agenda, and that it's going to be discussed, and what the likely recommendations may be, so, um, you know, it's not a criticism of the current process, although I think there are improvements that under um the recommendations that have been put forward under two and three, I think are important, but my preference uh has been to um have a committee structure, um, you know, one of the, one of the the things that I find really hard to explain to the community in my area that I represent at a governance level, is what's happening with the plan changes to address the industrial residential interface, I think if we had a committee where people could go, raise those concerns, they would feel a lot more comfortable than just coming to a full council, which a number of them have come in the past, and feeling like there's been no progress now, um, I know there's other mechanisms to try and advance those things, but, you know, for the community not to understand why things are not being done that we've agreed to, and not to have a committee chair or a deputy to go to, I think is a bit of a weakness in our current system, but, um, so I'll 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 not be supporting one, but I will support the other recommendations, thank you.
Okay, councillor McDonald?
Um, yeah, thanks, look, very briefly, I think these are always a good discussion, and it does show the different views around how councils, I guess, could potentially operate, I think fundamentally it comes back to the fact that we've set a structure at the beginning of this term, and that actually the next point to change that is at the next election, under, um, you know, that that new structure, uh however that may look, um, I I I think, well, I think the points have been really well canvassed throughout this entire thing, um, the only thing I would say is that in practice last term, we would literally convene meetings of the whole, or committees of the whole, for one paper, so we would literally, all the time and all the effort that went into the secretariat having to pull everything together, for literally sometimes a half an hour meeting, when I think about it, maybe forty-five minutes, and I kind of think actually that the points have been raised are really valid, but if there are genuinely papers that people feel we are not getting, uh then go and talk to the mayor, go and talk to Boyd, go and talk to Mary or Pauline, uh, or if it's finance, come and talk to Mallory, and we'll we'll make sure that you're getting that oversight that you need, I think it's really important people have visibility, but actually if we don't know what you don't, uh, if we don't know, I guess, what you want to see, or if there are concerns you have and they're not raised with us, we can't address that, um, but I come back to that fundamental point last term, and back to Vic's point about asking how it played out, we would genuinely convene on a Wednesday for probably forty-five minutes for some committees, uh to receive a report, so in practice, it didn't really work, um, and I just think actually halfway through now, we should kind of let this play out, I mean, obviously just to thank Megan and Matt and the team for pulling together a really good report, that I think explains, um, you know, the reason this works now, but actually the improvements that can be made, so it's good we've looked at it, but I think we've landed in a place uh where with some enhancements, we can continue to effectively govern for the city, um, noting that, as James said, we've got two hats, we've got a representative hat, so the local issues Yanni raised, there's nothing to stop anyone going and talking to him about that, but when you're sitting around the table, you're taking that citywide view as well.
Thank you, councillor Harrison Hunt, please, is there Tyler? Did he?
Uh, yeah, I thought Sam was, I thought Sam was finishing, but um, I, sorry, there's something going on here, can you hear me okay?
Roger.
Great, I just wanted to just quickly um note that as a portfolio holder, one of the three that were actually for the new committee structure that, my gosh, there's something going on here, apologies, um, that I am pro for some of the committees, and I'd love to see what that looks like, but I do want to recognise Sam's points that the, it's a little bit late in the in the piece to be able to look at and and to reviewing that, I'm looking forward to seeing what that looks like in the next term, um regardless of what happens, as a portfolio holder, you get a lot of flexibility, but at the same time, um, not as much oversight over the big things, uh it's great turning up to events, it's great actually getting a canvas on what's on the ground, but the big stuff still remain to be seen, um, there are some considerable capital capital projects, for example, such as the multicultural centre, which I've been working with staff on, which is really great being able to be on that one-to-one basis, but I have to reinform the rest of the council through my report, um, so again, it is also doubling up, but it's doubling up through an individual instead of through a group, so there are pros and cons to both, so I'm looking forward to seeing what it looks like, but I will be keen to see what the committee structure looks like, so I'll vote, be potentially voting against, not supporting uh one, but keen to support two, three and four, elder.
Thank you, buddy, uh councillor Coke.
Thanks, um, I hadn't really thought about what I was going to vote for till just now, um, because I wanted to listen to everybody, um, I I understand about um how committees and smaller committees can get people to delve, um councillors to delve deeper into issues, um, and I also understand the idea of um relitigating things when it comes to council, which seems um completely pointless, so I actually quite liked committees of the whole last term, because we all sat around the table and we did see a lot more information than what we've been receiving, the solution, obviously, to having committees which only have one report is to have them less frequently, and that would solve that issue, um, and I also quite liked um the ability to um be a chair or deputy chair for um quite a lot of members, I thought it was good for growth, especially if you hadn't been on a community board before, or hadn't been a chair, um, it gives you opportunity you don't um normally have, um, to to strengthen your governance skills, which I think is useful for all of us, so um I also feel this term, um, that portfolios um in our fence, but I think they don't work, I think they are a waste of time, I feel I have a lot less um connection with um youth, um, and and stuff to do with climate change, I I really feel like there's way, um, there's mu- there's there's a lot less um oversight of those things, I have um almost no connection to youth groups anymore, because I was seeing them used, and maybe I should be making more of any, obviously I should, but it actually is very helpful to have them coming in here, um, to meet with us, I really liked that, and so, um, I've actually decided I'm going to not support number one, even though I quite enjoy these meetings and like the way they work as well, but I do think the committee structure is um just slightly better, and it could be tweaked to improve it from last term, so that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, councillor Moore.
Thank you, I, nothing grime smoggy is more than boiling the cabbage twice, I did it in twenty eighteen, it put me out for weeks, I appreciate um more experienced members given their perspective, because as new members, it's tricky for us to know what does work better, whether the committees were working, whether they could have worked better, um, it's going to take a bit to really get a good idea, um, as for portfolios not working, I'm going to do my best to change your minds on that, councillor Coke, because I tell you what, I've got a doozy of a report coming your way, uh, in a few months' time, um, so thanks everyone for contributing, it's, you know.
Consider it done. Councillor Scandrit, and then councillor Cotter.
Yeah, um, thank you, as as being a dyslexic, the one really good thing about the previous one was actually when you um debated something twice, I only had to read it once, so it's bloody fantastic, and PowerPoints are good, because you've got pictures, you know, yeah, true, yeah, a cartoon's always good, so, yeah, but I I, the one thing that we've got to remember is that we will never reach perfection, the other thing that we're doing is, coun- councillor Temple mentioned, we've tried a number of different variants, so the one thing that we can count on is knowledge, so if I am fortunate enough to be here after the next election, I think it would be good to sit down with, hopefully, everyone or whoever's here, and really discuss our knowledge, what we've learnt from the last few sessions, with how we set up in the future, and what works and what doesn't, and I know that it's the mayor's prerogative, and it's empty, we live, it's fine, but I think if we concentrate on the knowledge and the learnings, both positive and negative, and work forward for the betterment of the rate pass, that is a good thing, so let's keep some positive about how we go forward, and I'm going to be supporting this, because we've agreed on a process, it's not perfect, but we should always aim for the better and the good, and that's what we should be aiming for as we go forward, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cotter.
Oh, yeah, look, I just wanted to speak in support of the portfolios, I think that they're just still bedding in, I think that, um, I think that they're really good, I I'm really pleased to see what's coming out of the portfolios, um, there's room there for um creativity and and positive stuff to come out of it, to be built out of it, rather than where we tend to sit here and respond to reports, I think that's a really good uh thing to to be fostering there, um, this new, this process that we've got now is actually relatively new, and I think it would be wrong to disrupt it now at this point, um, we do have to think about the pressure that committees do put on staff, but I just want to endorse what councillor McLellan said too, that I think committees have their place, we have a finance committee, there could be room for another one, but um we've got to do that right, and I think they do need delegation, otherwise you do end up um in the kitchen for too long, um, so, um, I will be supporting this today, because this is not the right time to change horses and disrupt the proceedings by building a whole new programme, the time to address this is at the beginning of a new electoral term, so for today, I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Okay, councillor Donovan?
Yeah, it's been good to hear the different perspectives, um, I've been here for just over two years, so I've had a pretty much equal amount of time with both systems, when I came to council, I didn't have experience with the community board, so I must admit it was quite a lot to learn, and I was appreciated the support and help of my colleagues in terms of guiding me through the process, but probably what was most useful was actually the committees of the whole, because actually through that process, you were able to participate in decision-making around some of the most substantial stuff around council, so one of the committees, of course, was the Transport and Infrastructure and Environment Committee, and I think, you know, the fact that we don't have um committees that look at some of those significant things, um, and portfolios that are looking at really, in my view, important things that could also be looked at, and maybe are more appropriate to be looked at through a portfolio, um, means that we're sort of maybe spending time on things that are important but aren't core council business, so my view would be that we would have um some combination of both, I do think there is space for committees of the whole, portfolios play a role, and I commend those that have taken them on, it's a huge amount of work for one person. So my view would be that we would have some combination of both. I do think there is space for committees of the whole. Portfolios play a role and I commend those that have taken them on. It's a huge amount of work for one person. I think the challenge is that one person is then required to cover off a lot of work, use a lot of staff time. And it's self-guided, so there'll be differing reporting requirements for each of those portfolios. So perhaps there isn't as much oversight as a council as a whole when we don't hear back from some of those portfolios. So I won't be supporting one, but I will be supporting the others.
Thank you, Dave. So I think we've done very well. I will put this motion and knowing that some will vote against number one and that will be recorded. So I will put the motion for the whole lot at the moment. And if anyone wants to vote against one, please let Sam know. So all those in favour? Against? Right. That's carried. So. Hands up for one.
Yes, thank you. If you would like your votes recorded against recommendation one, please just hands up high, please.
Thank you very much. Right, now we're going to take, we've got a couple of amendments coming for number seven, the Better Off Funding. We're going to take fifteen minutes just to get our head around that. So we'll have a cup of tea and then we'll be back. Thank you.
To it, thank you. Okay. Now, there's been a few amendments floating around. I'll just get Gary Watson to present this and he will make a bit of clarity hopefully on the way through. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. So I promise I have no PowerPoints and I will be open and transparent. So the report in front of you I'll take as read. The job basically was to go away and look at citywide projects that address safety issues or safety initiatives that we had. At the time of this report, we were in a climate of high youth crime. We were in the climate of many, many ram raids and part of the request was there. What council asked for was these community safety and crime prevention initiatives will support situational crime prevention in the central city and suburbs, as well as social and community-based crime prevention with a particular focus on youth. It also said that a flexible approach will be required to ensure that there's the ability to target initiatives and to address issues as they arise in different locations and neighbourhoods. So probably I won't go through everything because I'm sure there's questions on most things. But yeah, I'll just take the report as read and happy to answer any questions and work through whatever we need to work through.
Okay, just what we have got here. Just so I'm on the right track, Gary, this was part of the better off funding of about thirty-two-ish odd million.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes.
And this is two million of that, which we decided to spread around in these various places.
So one point nine seven million is left here, a hundred thousand has already been allocated to CCTV.
Okay, so one thing I want to make very clear here today, and I said it yesterday at our briefing, which was not in public. There is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars left. Now, what I'm always, and I said it at that briefing now, it's not a target, don't go out and rush and do it. And I know some councillors have already put in, I want a bit of this, I want a bit of that. I'm just taking that right off the table. If anyone wants a part of that hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for their area, you are the man to go and see about it. We are not making a decision here on what's left of your hundred and sixteen, because that's your department. You know damn sight more about it than we do. So otherwise we end up into a competition and that's not, that's not fair. So anyway, any questions of Mr Watson, councillor Hensock?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, appreciate the work that you've done on this. I was just trying to understand how you've come up with the priority areas for the smart poles, particularly like Hornby and Peppanui and Brighton. And also, how will you choose the location within those areas for the smart poles? Because I guess there's other, the reason for asking is there's areas like Phillipstown, Woolston, Bromley, for example, which I've also had requests for free wifi or air monitoring. And I'm just wondering how we're working through where the priority is for those smart poles.
So at the moment, the smart poles project came out where there is a briefing around New Brighton already for a smart pole. The opportunity with this money was to look at trialling or putting in two others. When I looked at the citywide request for this funding, it seemed appropriate that one in the east, one in the south and one in the north was a good way of saying it was across the city. Having said that, those are suggestions, there's been no work done on official sites. When the areas are chosen, we will then go and consult with boards and community around where the poles should go. This was a little bit about, let's get the poles and do the work after that. But certainly my drive was to try and spread these three across the city.
Okay, councillor Hensock, please.
Thank you, just carrying on with the comment in relation to the smart poles. If the trial is successful, where does the funding come from for the installation of additional poles?
I might just ask Michael who's here, who might be able to tell me, or he might not.
I think the intention would be to review the results of the trial in terms of, I suppose, how people get value and the community gets value from the poles in those three locations and build a business case for further funding from there. But based on, I suppose, the engagement we get from the public, how much people are using wifi, how, I suppose, the impact on crime, if people are feeling safer in those communities, because obviously safety is a key driver for the project.
Thank you, I'm comforted to hear there's going to be a business case around that. My next question then is, is there going to be a comms piece around the smart poles? I've had a number of people dropping in to my library sessions where they talk about this and they're not overly keen about it for one reason or another, yeah, concerned about the technology.
Yep, so we've done a number of newsline stories on the two poles that went in at Naval Point. So there was quite a lot of coverage around SalGP and quite a bit of interest in that area. So that was the initial implementation. In terms of, we also produced a video, the project was entered into the Algem Awards and it actually won its category for best smart cities project of the year. So we're certainly planning to kind of leverage all of our communication channels to promote the polls and get feedback from people on what they think about it and how they want to interact with them.
Okay, councillor McLellan, did you have one?
You may not be able to answer this one. Christchurch City Holdings Emerging Technology and Innovation Hub, what is that?
So that comes from some work that's been happening over the past three or four years to look at opportunities for, I suppose, different parts of the CCHL group to work together on emerging opportunities, whether it's climate change or developing things like the smart poles. So Kinetics has been the chief collaborator, obviously part of the family. So it's very much a journey together. They've been learning about the technology and they've been developing that part of the business to hopefully expand in future.
Is that a staffed resource or is it just what it's called when these entities collaborate?
It was just the name for the emerging technology group initially, it's had a few iterations. But it's just looking at those shared opportunities for different parts of the group and council to collaborate.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Councillor Peters, please.
Thank you. Fascinated to see the smart poles in the locations you've sort of suggested there. Could you clarify exactly what smart pole entails, not just wifi, I'm sure?
Yep, yep. So I suppose one of the key aspects of it is that the pole is hollow and modular. So the idea is that you can fit in different modules in to suit the application. So it reflects what's needed in the community. So I mean, thinking about New Brighton, we've talked about wifi from digital equity, but a connectivity thing for kids who may be, you know, without connection. CCTV obviously speaks for itself, it's connected to the police network. We've got pedestrian counting and multimodal counters, which will tell us if people are congregating, let's say, when they shouldn't, let's say, you know, in the middle of the night or if there's any emerging issues. So there's a range of technology, but we will be working with the community boards to work out what makes most sense in each location. So they're tailored and they're fit for purpose.
Excellent. And are they the sort of thing that they might be in initial installation and then once they've served their purpose, they perhaps migrate to other locations?
Yeah, that's a possibility. And also, I mean, there's the possibility of just put the hollow shell of the pole, just as normal street light in areas that might need technology initially, but maybe in two or three years because of a new facility, it may make sense to put wifi or other types of technology in them.
Thank you. And I guess just something we were talking about earlier, around the smart cities, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Hopefully we can get some comms out there to allow people's fears that, you know, we're spying on them, sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I think behind the smart poles is that, I suppose, giving back to the community, not just watching people, but giving them connectivity or making them feel safe or adding to, you know, those areas as opposed to just being monitoring devices. It's much more than that.
Very good, thank you. Councillor Scandra, please.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess every single councillor around here has had concerns from rate powers with regards to wanting a CCTV coverage, et cetera, in certain areas. So I'm certainly hoping that when the advice comes back from you, that the police and community patrols have been included in that. Because, I mean, it's hard when you go to your constituents and say, there's got to be connection with the police because it's got to be monitored, et cetera. And there are other areas that may perhaps be under more pressure than ours. So I really want that to be very clear. And just with a comment to councillor Peters with regards to, you know, people being worried about being monitored, et cetera. If you're on Facebook, TikTok or have a mobile phone, it's too late, you're being monitored.
Okay, have we got it, councillor Donovan?
Hi, this is just a one around the...
I've got you, Tala.
Sorry. In terms of the provision of some of these projects, which might end up sort of pushing, moving the problem around, will there be any monitoring? So I'm thinking about the inner city safety patrols. One of the concerns I've heard from the police is that sometimes what happens is the problem just gets shifted. How will we assess the impact on other areas outside the central city as a result of some of the initiatives in this plan?
So I presume probably the first two, one and two. So we get a lot of information back from the mission around where the street community are moving to, the reasons why they move, the pressure that's been put on them in the city. So we certainly have a monitoring of that and they come and report to council three times a year. The grant to youth and cultural development, this is the project, you know, like a mobile youth work project out and about. They will start to identify those kind of areas and those hotspots and we will be in touch with that. But certainly they won't only identify them, but they'll respond to it. Where there is issues, we are imagining, no, we know it will happen. They will identify and they will start to put some projects in there. I would think that, you know, hotspots generally are, I don't say this as it always happens, but you know, a month or six weeks is a hotspot, really. You go and do some good work in those areas and wider issues are the ones that are dealt with. So in terms of monitoring, we'll be expecting our partners to be keeping us up with that. We also hear from our communities and the community boards are very, you know, very open to letting us know where issues are.
A follow-up question, in terms of the data, in terms of where some of the hotspots are currently across the city. I'm told that there are sort of three suburbs that have higher incidence of various types of antisocial behaviour. Can you just give me a bit more information about the data that's behind some of the decisions around outside of the central city? So for...
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Well, this is informing the decision about where the money's allocated?
So I'm a little bit confused here. The only place that we have allocated any money is into the eastern project. The rest of it is across the city. So I'm just trying to understand what the question is.
So in terms of what you've seen as some of the hotspots?
Sure.
Do we have any information currently about where some of those are? So for instance, the bus exchange is a hotspot, as I understand, is that correct?
So the bus exchange has been a hotspot, I would not identify it as a hotspot anymore. The work that's gone in there has been really good and really, really good.
So are there any other areas that you consider to have hotspots currently?
So hotspots pop up. At one point we had the bus terminal at Northwood, sorry, at Northlands, not Northwood. Northlands was. That community board has worked with this community and put in a great project up there out of the money the board was allocated. In terms of Addington and that, we're starting to see hotspots around the homeless community. Certainly New Brighton has been an on and off hotspot, but there's also the programme that you guys as a board have put in there at the moment, although I understand it's in its last week. But they, you know, they move. We hear pretty quickly where they are. And the idea of having a mobile youth work project or mobile people, we can start to address those really quickly. We haven't been able to do that before.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, you weren't...
Gary.
Yeah, far away, sorry.
Get up.
Just a quick question around those hotspots. So those smart poles, can you talk to the public around what they're made for?
I'll hand back. And in terms of made for, you mean what services they have?
I mean, it's aimed at crime prevention and monitoring, but there are other things associated to those smart poles. I think it'll be of interest to the public.
They've just done that, Tom.
So just to go back to Naval Point as an example, as well as the crime cameras, the pedestrian and vehicle counting monitors there, free wifi of course to help with digital equity. And we've got a public address system there as well, which is to help with some of the after hours antisocial behaviour and for emergency management as well, given that it's quite prone to tsunamis there. For other areas we've been thinking about from, let's say, from a youth point of view, about cell phone charges, again, a pretty basic thing, but if, I suppose, if your phone's running out and you're feeling at risk, it's an important thing. And we've been thinking about and talking about other options, completely open if the technology's there and it adds value. I suppose one of the key things about the modular nature is the flexibility. And as new technology comes out or if there's new use cases, we have the ability to either incorporate it or swap it out as and when it makes sense.
I would really like to see from a safety viewpoint the ability for a young person or an older person or anyone who's feeling unsafe to be able to go and press something on that pole and talk directly to comms or something. I think that's, you know, something in the future, I think it'd be great.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hensock, please.
Thank you, just one further question in relation to the eastern suburbs community cohesion projects. I'm just sort of interested in the what and the how there, there's not a lot of detail and attachment B as to what you're doing.
I'll hand that to my colleague.
Yeah, the amount of detail relates to the fact that this is the next phase of the ongoing work in the area. It's securing the resources. It anticipates an ongoing response in line with the findings of the report into the council's handling of the wastewater treatment fire. It covers a number of initiatives through mapping and building on community relationships, the hiring, if that's where it goes, hiring some external expertise to monitor that, improve engagement. It also very much puts a sum of money in the white eye board's area to workshop through and identify initiatives. Some of the ones that have come up are obviously the wastewater treatment plant. There's a lot of uncertainty over coastal hazards, tsunami planning, community initiatives. So there's plenty to go on, they will be identified and locked down by the board. So this is a start of a ten, funding it out there in response, the detail will come.
Yeah, I'm not clear at all, I'll leave that over to the community board to pursue that further.
Thank you.
Okay, but before I go any further, I've got someone who will move it, which is me, and councillor Potter will second it going forward. We have one more question, we're talking around in circles here. I look at it as being, here we are giving money, two million dollars, which we were given for nothing, spreading it out amongst people. So if we talk round and round circles, we'll be here for the rest of the day. So councillor Donovan, and then I'll put it out there for vote, and I understand you've got an amendment.
In terms of the discussion with the community board, how much work has gone into the wastewater treatment plan, recovery plan? Has that started yet?
But it's, it's been, uh, the, the, the work's been, uh, ongoing, uh, councillor, and, uh, the, uh, you know, the, probably the, the last iteration was some, some communications that have gone out to, uh, to local areas. For the, uh, this will, uh, enhance it, kick it up, the, uh, uh, identify relationships that aren't there and, uh, work on what we need to do to maintain them. So this is the next stage.
But just to be clear, the plan hasn't started yet, um-
The, w- well, the, the plan, the, the plan started before the, uh, you know, uh, immediately after the incident. It is, it is ongoing and it's probably fair to say that the, that the phase, yeah.
That's great, and final question is, in terms of the community board priorities, in terms of what the, um, eastern suburbs have requested in regards to funding such as this, uh, two of the community board priorities relate to safety. So, um, it's great to see that, um,
Yeah.
as we'll see in the amendment coming up, that we are able to allocate things towards what the community board's requested so far. So thanks very much.
Thank you councillor.
Councillor Johansson, this is the last question.
Very last, very quick, I'm, I'm just wondering if we need to make provision for the Port Hills Fire Recovery Plan from this budget as well?
Our councillor, I think it's too early to say.
Right.
It's precisely something we'll be working on, the allocation of resources, what's needed. At this point in time, yeah, potentially too early. And it may not be the subject matter of the Better Off Fund, too early.
Well, it's both fire recovery, okay.
Thank you for bearing with us at the moment, I'm just getting a bit of advice from my learned colleague here to my right.
So, so, uh, what we have is we have a suggested amendment, uh, by councillor Donovan, uh, that she needs to, that she wants to ask the mover and the seconder if they are prepared to accept. Is that correct? So you'll second it, uh-
If the mover and seconder aren't happy, I'm happy to second it, if it needs to second it.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, okay.
So it-
So then we'll have to go into debate around these and then put the motion, put the, uh, amendment. And then if that's lost, put the main motion.
Can I just ask a question, I mean, have we got staff advice on this? Because how can we, that's a large quantum of public money. Have we got, I can't see anything in the papers that references that, is there staff advice?
So do we put them? Lay it on the table until we get some staff advice?
Well, it'll slow, it'll slow down everyone else getting on with their stuff.
I think that's a dangerous precedent, because if everyone just starts hurling of this, this one, not the entire item.
That would be number four, but you could go into debate and just put, uh, have the debate and then put the full origi- uh, then put the amendment. And if it's lost, go on to the, uh-
Isn't the point that we get this sort of stuff beforehand, the meeting? That's why we have it a week before, we can have this information, then we can compare apples with apples.
Yeah.
Shall, shall we have a wee rest for just a couple of minutes to get our head around it? Okay, so we'll, we'll June for five minutes, just to see exactly where we are.
Yeah, good idea.
Really have to get going to, uh, um, the emergency operations centre, so I'm keen on getting this.
Debate the amendment and put it to the vote.
Okay, so we've got the, um, amendment in front of us, I'm going to put the amendment to the debate and then we'll put it to the vote, so councillor Donovan starts.
Yep.
Yep, away you go.
Um, so there was maybe a bit of confusion around this, so this is really about just, um, framing the funding that's already been put forward towards eastern suburbs, towards a more specific focus. So the community board has nine community board priorities, two of those are focused on safety. So the two areas that we've identified across eastern suburbs for safety initiatives in particular are New Brighton and Woolston and also East Gate Mall. So in terms of what the community board direction to council has been, we need to be focusing on safety initiatives in eastern suburbs, but specifically in those two high priority areas. The reason that we've put a more specific request in terms of targeting those areas is to make sure that when this comes to the community board, we can be more strategic in how that money is allocated. This is something that the community board has been working quite hard on over the last year and a half. In the last few months, we've seen a massive spike in antisocial behaviour in New Brighton Mall and also in other parts of eastern suburbs. And of course, it would be useful to know a bit more data around what's causing that. But the anecdotal evidence, all the feedback that we've had from retailers and other businesses that are looking to set up in, for areas such as New Brighton Mall is that they're, they don't feel adequately supported to, uh, address some of those issues that they're experiencing. We anticipate that these safety initiatives will have a short, uh, lifespan, so for the next couple of years, as things get underway to, uh, as council continues to invest in those areas, we should see things turn around, but there is a period at the moment, much like the central city, where we've actually seen that there has been an increase in certain types of behaviours that we need to put a bit more support in place to make sure that we're delivering outcomes that benefit us as a city. So this is really, this is not a request for additional funding, this is a request for when the funding comes to community board, the community board, uh, staff have been delegated the authority to look at what projects would benefit from additional funding related to safety, uh, and other development and cohesion initiatives in those particular areas to give them the boost, to make sure that we're being strategic in how that's delivered and that it doesn't become, uh, too dispersed across a wider area and we lose focus of what the purpose of the safety better off funding was supposed to be delivered for. And we appreciate the fact that, um, there has been some, uh, confusion around the purpose of this, but ultimately it's about delivering on community board, um, outcomes. And we, um, appreciate the fact that this may seem like it's targeting, um, certain areas over the rest of the city, but it's about prioritising areas of high need.
Okay, thank you councillor Cotter. Did you, oh, Goff, sorry.
Um, look, I'll, I'll keep this, um, pretty quick. I, I just think this is super shoddy process, I think it's disrespectful to the community board chair and my personal view is I'm not comfortable with this approach. But if you want to progress it the right way, um, I think send it to the community board.
Councillor, uh, McClellan?
Yeah, I'm not denying that the money probably should go to these areas, I just don't understand, I'm, hopefully you can pick it up in your reply or maybe, um, councillor Johansson can. Why handcuff, do we not trust the board, wh- why do we not leave it just to the board to do it? I understand, are they not, do they want something different, I guess is my question. I would hate to be forcing them to do something that they don't want to do. Other than that, I'm supportive, if that makes sense.
Councillor McDonald?
Um, basically echo the end, uh, sentiments of Goff and McClellan, it's, I would have thought if the resolution in my mind, the staff will work through it, was to literally allocate the money to the community board to make the decision, then I for one trust the community board to make the decisions. And the priorities have already been identified, I'm not sure why as a council we need to be tagging specific money when we have a very competent community board that we should empower to make these local decisions. They'll make the right decision, but it's on them to make it, not us tagging it to a particular thing.
Thank you councillor Coker.
Um, yeah, I'll support this because, um, I've sent it to the chair and they've had a read and of the community board and seem okay with that, so I will support it on that basis.
Okay, councillor Moore?
Just, just something, hope you're able to clarify in a, in a reply. Does that mean if there's a really, really good initiative in one of the neighbouring suburbs, there might be five thousand, does this mean they can no longer do that? It's, it's, that, but it's just not making sense to me, I, I don't, yeah, I'm not, not seeing the point here if the board's making a decision anyway, thank you.
Councillor Harrison Hunt? Tala?
Uh, Kilda, uh, I just, uh, circulated the, um, police dot J V T dot N Z slash crime snapshot and we saw some hotspots around the city around, um, not only antisocial behaviour but victimisation, particularly around burglary, theft, robbery, abduction and assault.
This is, this is just, this is just about, um, Celeste's, uh, amendment, buddy.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you see in the New Brighton Mall area, there is hotspots particularly around there and Woolston and East Gate. If you're looking at Linwood East, for example, it's actually highlighted as a, as a bright green closer to orange, but around those other ones would actually deem it to be orange, particularly around Northlinwood and Phillips Town, so I'm happy to support this based on, um, the need for this, and if the community board chair is actually in support of it, I'm going to be in support of it, so happy to support.
Okay, so we've had enough discussion and, oh, debate, you, you haven't done yours yet, have you? Thank you, Yanni.
Thank you, um, I, I think the reason for me why it's important to be more specific in the resolution is to be consistent, if you look at the smart polls, you're not delegating that to the community boards to choose, I mean, if you wanted to just take the idea that you'd give the community with the money and let them choose with the smart polls and give every community board some funding and let them get on with it. But I think what's concerning is that this money, when we agreed to it, the better off funding, this is for safety initiatives in the community. But when you read the report, somehow that sa- those safety initiatives which many of us have been asking, uh, staff, what's the process, what's going on, uh, when are we getting visibility of it, has now been transformed into the wastewater treatment plant fire response. And I do kind of wonder how fair that is, we've got a Port Hills recovery plan, uh, we've got money being spent on that response that's not coming out of better off funding. And yet the people in, in the wastewater treatment plant are still experience, experiencing the vile stench. So, you know, that issue is ongoing. That, that is having a massive impact on communities every day since November. Ecan have just given us a significant notice of non-compliance. So the idea that we would take safety money and put it into a fire response and recovery plan, to me just seems not the right approach. This money was supposed to go towards safety initiatives in the local community and the communities that Celeste and I are putting forward are ones that have come to the council, come to the community board and said, we need support. We just had a really good group in New Brighton, um, close, closed down, right? Like, because, and, and part of the letter that they referenced was the fact that we weren't supporting them with security arrangements. This is the guardians of Rafiti Domain, a really good group, so, you know, I think this is a sensible approach. Um, I appreciate the work that Celeste's done on it. This hasn't been through a lack of us trying to get staff advice on how we can use this money for safety initiatives. So if people feel we're inadequate information today, please don't think that it's because of we haven't been trying as local councils for the area to get progress, but ideally this should be based on need uh, and there are needs in this area and that's why I support the amendment.
Thank you, and lastly councillor Donovan, have you got the-
Uh, sorry, no right of reply for an amendment.
Oh, right, thank you very much, right, so we'll put the, uh, amendment. All those in favour of the amendment that you can see on top of, uh, up there, please say aye.
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 Those against?
No.
Right. Division, okay.
Well, no one really spoke when they voted against it.
Are we all ready?
Yep.
Councillor Moore? Councillor Johansson?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cotter? Councillor McClellan? Councillor Barber?
Uh, yes.
Councillor Goff?
No.
Councillor McDonald?
Nope.
Councillor Quen? Councillor Fields?
Yeah.
The mayor?
No.
Councillor Scandret? Councillor Harrison Hunt?
Yes.
Councillor Coker? Councillor Templeton?
Aye.
Councillor Donovan?
Yes.
Councillor Peters? Councillor Hensock?
Well done, that's-
It carried.
That's carried, thank you. Whoop, yep, okay, so now we move on to the big one, because I'm running out the door in any second. Okay, now, all enter, thank you. And I'll see you soon, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll just move into the substantive motion now and, um, I think we could pretty much consider that debate has covered everything. Does anyone really burningly want to speak to this? Aaron, or councillor Quen?
Yeah, thank you, I'll, I'll be brief, um, I won't be voting either way on this, I won't abstain, I'll actually take no part. And I just note in the letters to the editor today, under stadium costs, even though I disagree with Phil Yarrow and Amanda Stevens from Linwood on the mayor asking our neighbours for money towards the stadium, what I do agree with was his final, uh, paragraph which says, another forward-thinking idea could be to spend the government's, uh, three waters millions actually on three waters. We would rather have plenty of fresh drinkable water than wifi on a pole, thanks. Um, that's the sentiment of people out there. Um, I've never agreed with the blood money coming from the government to try and bribe councils into, um, handing over their three water assets. Um, it's borrowed money, it makes no sense, and the two rules on that money is that you can't spend it on three waters and you also cannot spend it on paying down debt. Uh, neither of which makes sense, um, so, and it's, and it's borrowed, it's been loaded on kids of the future. So I will take no part in it because I've never agreed with it, thank you.
Councillor Coker?
Uh, surprisingly in opposition to that, um, I just actually wanted to comment on the city mission, um, money in those outreach positions because I think they're just so important. Um, we've got a lot of contact with, um, Josh who, um, has been working with homeless people and I really support the idea of continuing this and I hope we can figure out a way to fund this for further years into the future because we'll continue to need it, so I'm very, very supportive of that.
Thank you, and councillor Harrison Hunt?
Kilda, seeing as this is a lot, uh, seeing a lot of these projects are affecting youth, um, positively, I might just want to give a quick shout out to the city mission and Josh Gardner for the work that he's doing at the moment, and the people that he calls street whanau. I also want to shout out to YCD and RED for the work they're going to do in the bus exchanges and the bus lounge in Ricketon and particularly those hotspots-
and the bus lounge in Ricketon, and particularly those hotspots all around the city. I'd lastly like to um give a shout out to Michael Healy and the Smart Polls crew for ensuring that all of these um initiatives are balanced lightly. And um again, I fully support every single part of this. I'm welcoming government money and I'm looking forward to seeing how this works out for the next few years, Kilda.
Kilda, councillor Hinstock?
Uh, thank you. Just, just briefly on, I am concerned about the optics of some of this. Thanks for raising that councillor Kewen, about what some of the public are saying. I think that as a council, there are, we're not even delivering some of the basics well. And here we are spending money on, on some of these things and with particular reference to the smart polls. And let me be clear, I'm not against the smart polls per se. But from the op- optics perspective, there'd be people out there that are saying these really are nice to haves. And I know the money comes from central government and, and not from our, our coffers, but it's taxpayer money, it's ra- it's, you know, still rate payer money. So from the optics perspective, it's not great. And it has the potential to look wasteful. Uh, for many people, perception is their reality. And so is it any wonder that we've got public who have little trust and confidence in, in how we're spending our money? And it does make me wonder then, from a safety perspective, you know, perhaps we should be giving this money back and saying, please give us more police in the community. Please give us more traffic enforcement in the community. Help us to deter the red light runners, the um, you know, the antisocial driver behaviour. We know where the hotspots are. You know, these are indisputable safety issues uh that the public really care about, perhaps not so much the smart polls.
Thank you. Councillor Barber?
Uh, thank you deputy mayor. Yeah, um I really take on board councillor Kewen's um perspective and those of some of the rate payers and also councillor Hinstock's um views. Um, I feel like uh particularly the first two um resolutions are uh are really good positive things for our city. Um, I feel like this is God's work, you know, uh we need to look after the most vulnerable people in our communities. Uh, I don't really mind where the money comes from, uh but I think this is really, this is money well spent uh in supporting um those that are in need and we should never shy away from that, um no matter where that comes from. So I'm happy to support this.
Kilda, councillor Fields?
Well, thank you, um councillor Barber. You've just taken the words out of my mouth though. Just the, the, the optics of, the optics of, um, I mean, just on point number one. I mean, people that aren't rate payers simply because they don't have houses to pay rates on, because they don't have homes. Uh, if, if, if we're getting the basics right, looking after our fellow human beings and looking after the homeless and our most vulnerable people, that is the ultimate basics of, of everything that we should do. So I'm very, very happy to support um all the resolutions there.
Councillor McDonald?
Yeah, I probably will stay away from the, the actual content of it, but just remind you of the process we've been through. So uh the previous government went through a track where they wanted to bribe us for three waters. Uh, we signed up to a deal, uh we were forced to sign up to it. We've got a pot of money that actually we should spend in our community. Um, so this is the end of a process. We gave the staff a clear steer to go away and do this work. This is the final end and it would be a shame for it to be voted down today. Um, because actually it's structured in a way where government are paying for it. If you think about it, if you think about New Zealand as a whole, you know, ninety-five percent at least of public money is based around Wellington. So whenever they give us a chance, whether it's borrowed or not, uh to take money and pump it into Christchurch, we need to do that at every step. Um, this will achieve a few problems. And to be honest, I even look at the CCBA work that has been done already uh with this. Um, you know, make, make no mistake, if this wasn't funded from here, uh we'd be picking that up as uh, you know, as rate payers. So I think this is a good thing. But again, just a cautionary run, it's the end of a process we agreed to, uh to sign on, on some stuff. And I think the team have done a good job in getting that balance right.
Councillor Peters?
Thank you. Yes, certainly is the end of a process. Thanks for reminding us of that, Sam. Um, certainly really happy to see the city mission and the work of Josh Gardner and his outreach team um supported there because they do some fabulous work. There's a, you know, homeless people all over our city who, you know, fallen on the, the bones of, of their, their backsides for one reason or another. It's not their fault. Um, anything we can do to help them, I think this is fantastic. Um, fully encourage that. The, the youth um stuff there as well, hey, this is great. I mean, we've, we've heard um evidence um in our board around how having youth workers around bus exchanges, bus lounges can really lower the, the problems we have there. So this is a good positive thing to, to help target to, to um control those hotspots. Um, the smart polls, whilst they may not be doing directly what councillor Hinstock was talking about around the, the crime, it's certainly a good step in the right direction and a good way of, you know, um helping to, to identify where the problems are and, and, you know, allow the police to have visibility to, to um help lower that, that incidence. And I was really comforted to hear that, you know, there is the opportunity for um potentially some um movement of, of these technologies and smart polls around as, as when we need to. So this isn't just fixed into, you know, three locations. This is something that we can um get around. Also looking forward to, to working with um Gary um and his team around potentially some of the extra pot that's left there. Uh, we'd certainly got a Horsell Community Patrol establishing at the moment, thanks to the efforts of councillor Moore. And uh we've got some need out there for a new patrol car. This could be a good way to, to try and um, you know, put that to good use and, and help make our communities feel more secure. So overall, this is great, really happy to support it and uh good to see the, the end of this process um coming to fruition.
Thank you. Councillor Johansson?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see uh the resolutions in front of us. I'm more than happy also to move an amendment to change the poll from Papenui to Bromley. Uh, if the councillor in the area would support that, I should be more than welcome to second it. Um, because the reality is that these polls are not just about providing free wifi. Actually, there's a number of technologies that they can use and things like air quality um and things like traffic movement. Just think of some of the decisions where we've had to put millions in to prop up or to support developments that have happened in Papenui because of the increased traffic. So imagine if we have real-time data around what's happening with traffic, pedestrians etcetera walking through a, a really busy area. That might lead to much better outcomes when we come to make uh consenting decisions, for example, or when we start to design what the traffic safety interventions we're going to put in. So I think the polls have a lot more value than just simply the free wifi. Um, and things like monitoring air quality, pollution. Uh, we know research coming out now that um adjacent to uh people that live adjacent to uh lots of traffic, um there are adverse health outcomes that people do experience. So if we can monitor what's in the air and start thinking smarter, I think it's a really positive thing. Um, the other thing is that I really want to um commend the idea of actually using the bus exchange as a place to have um youth workers. If, if you look on the mobile youth work service, you know, it talks about having an office presence at the bus exchange. From day one since that building was in design, I've a- argued that there should have been a youth space incorporated into the bus exchange in town. It was the most sensible thing to do. Um, it didn't happen at the time, but actually today we've got a chance to sort of recognise that that is an incredibly valuable thing to do. So I think we should support the young people in the city to feel safe. Often, young people are the victims of a lot of the crime as well. And the more we can do to ensure that uh, that we do improve safety and reduce the risk, uh I think the better. We want people using the buses. And one of the biggest complaints I get from people that use the buses is the feeling of, feeling unsafe. So I support the work that's been done in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I agree with that. I think of the two million, basically, give or take here, um of the money that we have been gifted. And I agree with um councillor McDonald, don't look a gift horse in the mouth, we need this money. Um, and it will be, I think the way that this has been crafted is very, very, going to be very beneficial to our city. Um, the way we make a safe city is to encourage people to feel safe. And you feel safe by being around people that you feel safe with, not just by having police walking around. So having people on the ground actually supporting other people, I think, is the key. And the smart polls will a- also add to that. So, um, and we all know that the, the work the city mission does is absolutely amazing. I know that Chris was sitting in here previously, he's obviously had to leave, but he was very interested in seeing how this went. So look, on that note, um I will put the substantive noting that we have amended for and we've already voted on that. So all those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you. Um, now, what's the time? I think we'll keep going, we've got the.
Councillor Kewen, do you like your um? Yes, recorded.
So did you want to abstain?
No, he just was sticked away.
But he was here. Right, item eight. It is really. And you debated? He started the debate, really. Okay, item eight. The Metropolitan Discretionary Response Fund application. I'll invite staff to the table to speak to us about why you've made the recommendation of nil.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Um, just one application for the Metropolitan Discretionary Response Fund uh this month. And it's for, yeah, the New Zealand Symphony Orchestra Foundation for their Beyond Words musical tribute. We've got some staff here to support if there are any particular technical questions.
I'll tell you that though. Um, just briefly, the NZSO is the country's national orchestra. Um, is a, a crown entity. Um, as such, can't apply for funding directly and has a foundation that is not an unusual structure um that applies for money on its behalf. Um, as I've set out in the assessment, a really laudable project. Um, a requirement of the D R F, however, is, is the timeliness of the application and whether or not it was an urgent application. And um this has been a project in planning since twenty twenty-two. Um, I'm also uh very aware of the um central government funding of the orchestras is pretty hefty. Um, and we're pretty mindful of what that looks like for our community um as we think about awarding funding to a national arts organisation such as the NZSO. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councillor Johansson?
Can, can we get the final bullet point clarified like we asked for yesterday? Is there additional information that's come through on that? Or is it, I may have missed it?
Oh, that's one, see. Uh, yeah, so uh the organisation that the NZSO has largely been working with is Wellington-based. So we do have that information. Thank you.
Right, so, so, and it says there's no clar- sorry, no clarity around who or where the group is located? And confirmation has been sought about the nature of local community engagement?
Yeah, so um they have had engagement with the, uh excuse me, when I check, the Sakina Trust uh who are coordinating Unity Week. Um, uh, the NZSO replied that they have had ongoing engagement and we certainly had uh evidence in twenty twenty-two of some support from Sakina.
Right, so do we, um, just kind of wondering why, why they're engaging with Wellington group rather than a Christchurch group, with something that is about Christchurch?
It possibly relates to the, the um performance travelling. So there's uh the initial concert will be uh here in uh Christchurch on March the seventh and then there'll be a subsequent performance in Wellington and Auckland. And they're aligned to their arts festivals. Thank you. So councillor McDonald has moved this. We have a seconda for this one. Councillor Kewen, um is there any um more questions or debate? Okay, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, say aye? Aye, opposed? That's carried, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
There's no reflection on the orchestra itself, it's just that, that we don't need to fund this. Thank you, just making that clear. Now we'll go into the um supplementary um item and welcome staff to the table on the um regional, Canterbury Regional Land Transport Plan submission that we requested that, um that we put one in. So this came through, did it come through your committee or something? We've had, we've had a brief discussion about this.
You had a briefing on it?
Right, and, yes, it did. It came through the um finance and performance and we requested, we thought it would be a good idea if we did put a, a submission in. So um if you could just run through the, the highlights, it's not a complicated one. Thanks.
Kia ora tātou. Um, yes, I'll just quickly run through the highlights. Um, so the regional land transport plan is a statutory process uh that is running slightly ahead of our L T P, but our L T P informs, our long-term plan informs it. Um, at the last meeting, we were, you, we were asked to um provide a submission on behalf of council uh and draft a submission on behalf of council. Largely, there's um two or three main points. We, uh the bulk of it we agree with, the um support, the focus on resilience. What is the word I'm looking for? Sorry, sorry, Tom. Support, oh, I hand over to Jane, she'll probably go better than me, smoother than me, sorry.
Sure, um so there's a series of high-level priorities in the document such as um a focus on maintenance, a focus on responding to extreme events, um active transport, public transport, support for the freight network. And all of those align with um the sorts of priorities that we have for our, for our own uh transport network.
And the other main focus that came through from the meeting that we had with you was the, the um change in regional priority for the project of Pages Road Bridge. And so we've highlighted that concern and highlighted more information that we would like the regional committee to consider in their deliberations.
Yeah, thank you. Right.
Sorry, through the chair, can I just add, we have had feedback from the community board and yourselves through this process and that's all been incorporated into this.
Yes, that's right. So are there any questions, councillor Kewen?
Yeah, just, I'm wondering if uh on page nine, uh, point six, which is the very start of the submission, if we can strengthen that with uh adding at that point that the Pages Road Bridge remains our number one priority. That, that, that remains the Christchurch City Council's number one priority in this, if we could add that. Just so, when you go through it, um it does explain that and kind of repeats that, but always in a first bullet point, you say what you want. And our council wants the Pages Road Bridge to be our number one priority. So let's be really clear, in case we get a skim reader who misses the PowerPoint presentation.
Right.
So if that can just be in that first one, we're good. Thank you.
Can I suggest we, we read it through the chair to say it is council's, if, if you agree, it is council's number one priority and we consider, and, and number one resilience project? And we consider it of regional significance?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
And um, yeah, because I think there's the, there's the, the Wood End bypass and the Ashburton Bridge and it's, and the Pages Road Bridge are probably the three regional projects, but I think that they are all of equal importance. I don't think the government should be trying to prioritise between those. They're all, they all have their merit. So that's the main points, I think, out of that. Thank you. Um, Celeste?
I just want to thank staff for their work on this. I think it's really important, as um councillor Kewen has said, that we're really making it clear around the Pages Road Bridge. I just wanted in terms of question, when we will likely hear back around the funding, um where this is being prioritised in the finalised plan? So what's the timeline currently, just for people that are watching this?
Um, I don't have the exact timeline in front of me, I'm happy to provide that. Um, there'll be a process whereby they'll, they'll do submissions, hearings and then come back to the regional transport committee, but we can provide that information for you.
Okay, that'd be good, thank you.
So is there um any more questions? Um, number four is uh appointing uh the deputy mayor myself to um present this or speak to this submission. Is there anybody here that would prefer to do that?
I'll nominate someone.
Are you saying yes?
She had it. Um, um, welcome councillor Kewen if he would like to join me, but I think. Yeah, I'll be happy with that.
I think because um, you know, our importance has been to highlight the Pages Road Bridge, it might be a good idea to have the local councillor speaking to it. So with the will of the committee, um and the will of the mover, could we amend that and pop your name in there, councillor Donovan?
Sounds good, thank you.
Is it, can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
It's yang and yang this time.
Excellent. All right, is there any debate, sorry?
Through the chair, sorry, can I just go back to the question that councillor Donovan asked very, very quickly, the timeline? Um, submissions close on twenty-sixth of February, hearings are eighteen, nineteen March. Deliberations are on the twenty-eighth of March and the final plan is approved by R T C. This is, is proposed on the eighteenth of April.
Might be nice to, to get that in a memo, please, so that we've got that recorded on the hub. Right, is there any debate on this? If not, oh, councillor Kewen?
Yeah, and uh, and I will uh thank the council if they vote to have Celeste and I um submit on this. Yeah, and I will thank the council if they vote to have Celeste and I submit on this. Point eight is very, very telling in the submission and points to if there's, or the chances that there's a 26% chance of a magnitude magnitude eight or greater earthquake in the Hikirangi Trench within a 50 year period. That should alarm everyone and that will be the point that Celeste and I will make extremely strongly when this is heard. Because it says that the potential of saving significant number of lives by implementing this project and having it done as soon as possible is key. Yes, we support the Woodend bypass. Yes, we support the bridge in Ashburton. But there will not be significant loss of lives if those projects aren't done ahead of this one. This is the one that is the most important to the people of Christchurch. None of us ever want to look a resident of New Brighton in the eyes and try to explain to them why we delayed doing this bridge. And they are at a funeral for someone from their family. Our city's been through that in the past. Let's not do it again. This is incredibly important and that's why Celeste and I will fight for this really, really hard to be ramped right up and delivered as soon as possible.
I pity them. Councillor Donovan? I'm sorry, did you want to speak, Mark? Do you want to go last, Celeste?
Oh, sure.
So councillor Peters.
Thank you. No, wholeheartedly agree with councillor Kewin and there. Pages Road Bridge is a lifeline out of the, you know, New Brighton in eastern area is absolutely vital. So go ahead and represent that well. That's awesome. I'm also really pleased to see in point 14, the mention there of the MRT and the Hornby Harbour and Corridor development being, you know, part of the priority as well. Because, you know, there's nothing better as, after the Pages Road Bridge, to look at the idea of how we can enhance the public realm with the public transport, mass rapid transit, you know, coming out to the western Hornby. And having the Hornby Harbour and Corridor development as a focus is vitally important to make sure that we can get that area right. So that as this public transport MRT lands out there, we can actually have a good opportunity to get it right. So if we can, I guess in your presentation, also highlight the importance of master planning for that. And given that MRT project ramping up as well, that would be handy to make sure we can have our city growing in the right way. That'd be fantastic. So thank you.
Councillor Barber?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to celebrate the coming together of councillor Kewin and councillor Donovan. The fact that they're going anywhere together is a fantastic thing that we should celebrate. In all seriousness, however, yeah, look, I think they'll make the point really clearly. This bridge project has been going on for far, far too long and it needs to be expedited. And I think it will make a huge difference, you know, even the slowest bike rider amongst us could be 15 kilometres away from New Brighton if there was an earthquake, but only if the bridge is there. And if the bridge in its current state, you know, I don't know how well it would do. It should have been replaced some time ago. So it'd be really good for them to send a very clear message that we need this bridge done ASAP. Thanks.
Excellent. And so that's also before Celeste closes off, I'll just remind people that this is a $10.5 billion project over 10 years of Canterbury investment. So we need to get our voice in there. And it's not just the Pages Road Bridge, but also we're looking for investment in the mass rapid transport and transit. And also prioritising our public transport futures programme. So there's a lot more in this, including really looking at how we move freight around in a better way, a safer way and an easier way, in a more efficient way. So it's quite a complex piece of work, but I totally support this council going into bat for the Pages Road Bridge. And I'll hand over to Celeste to close the debate.
Thank you. And I just want to say, you know, the fact that councillor Kewin and I are going together shows that, you know, when there is a really important bit of work, councillors do work very well together and can agree. So I just want to acknowledge that. Pages Road Bridge, as has already been said, is a vital lifeline linked to eastern suburbs. We know that the bridge itself is 93 years old. So on that basis alone, probably needs to be replaced. But then it was damaged really severely in earthquakes and at that time, there were some temporary repairs put in place and emphasis on temporary. So those repairs are eating, reaching the end of their residual life. So we have to ask ourselves what happens next. And the risk is if this project isn't funded and prioritised in the regional land transport plan, there is a reasonable chance that it won't receive funding because it's currently at number 12. When the government dishes out whatever funding it dishes out to fund transport projects. And bearing in mind that the wooden bypass, I think, costs about a billion dollars, there won't be much left in the pot when you get done to number 12. I'd also note that the bridge itself is only at 15 to 20% of the new building standard. So it's earthquake prone. And it doesn't meet any of the seismic standards. So we really need to press on with this. And the final point I would make is that regardless of what happens through the regional land transport plan, I think it's important that we as a council acknowledge that this project needs to be delivered regardless of any direction from government. We're constantly saying that, you know, we don't want to be dictated to by government. If we see this as a priority, we should be making sure that we deliver this through the long term plan regardless of funding. And that we shouldn't let the project be delayed through any stages of planning because it's already taken too long to get to this point because lives are at risk. So once again, thanks for your support and I look forward to giving this presentation to the regional land transport committee with councillor Kewin.
Thank you. All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. And then should we go into the PX now? All right, so we've just got one item left, which is a PX item. So I'll move that we go into PX. I have a second to send councillor McDonald. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. And I think we'll break.